In progress.
Councilmember Goddard.
I'm here.
Councilmember Ackerman.
I'm here.
Vice Mayor Cutrano.
Present.
And Mayor Hellman.
I'm here.
All present, thank you.
Thank you. And before I request a motion to approve the agenda and affidavit of posting, I'd like to dedicate this meeting to the legacy and memory of Bell Hooks, who was an extraordinary person, a trailblazer, author, scholar, who was a thought leader in the realms of feminism, race, love, and gender. And I will read a very brief quote of hers, "Beloved community is formed not by the eradication of difference, but by its affirmation, by each of us claiming the identities and cultural legacies that shape who we are and how we live in the world. May she rest in power and in peace, and may her legacy continue to inspire." Okay, council, would one of you like to make a motion to approve the agenda and affidavit of posting?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, we have motion Ackerman, second Goddard. Michelle, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Kohler.
Yes.
Councilmember Goddard.
Yes.
Councilmember Ackerman.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cutrano.
Yes.
And Mayor Hellman.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Okay, so it was item 16, and that was continued. And we, the item is to appoint new town manager and approve employment agreement. Adam, may we please have a staff report?
Yes, Madam Mayor, and council members, a very exciting moment. The long search for over the last five months, the town council, working with Heather Renssler from Ralph Anderson and Associates, has come to the end of the recruitment process for our next town manager. In your packet is the proposed contract and the terms of those, of that contract. And in the staff report, highlights a few of the components of the contract. Unfortunately, our new town manager is not available this evening to be introduced to you all, as she has her own board meeting this evening that conflicted with it. So she would like to be here, and we'll plan a meet and greet here in the near future. But the, the, the contract is, is competitive with our market here in Marin County and the North Bay. Consistent terms that the predecessor town manager Toy had in his contract, similar terms that town manager Toy had in his contract, and again, consistent with the market. I'm happy to answer any questions of the council. If the contract is approved this evening, Ms. Heather Abrams will join the team, the Fairfax team, no later than March 1st. Prior to March 1st, she'll be working with me and other members of the town staff to start the transition process, so when she arrives, she's fully been brought up to speed on the various issues and programs, primarily working with myself and the finance director, and our town attorney and town clerk. But I would imagine by the time that Heather Abrams starts officially on her first day, she'll be well, well in the swing of things. But I'm happy to answer any direct questions of the council, and again, I'm very excited for you all and the process that you underwent. We had a competitive process with very good candidates and applicants, a thorough vetting and interview process that you all led with the assistance of Heather Renssler from Ralph Anderson and Associates. And again, I'm here to answer any questions you all may have.
Okay, thank you, Adam. Renee, you have a question?
Yeah, I was just going to request, Adam, and I don't want to put you on the spot here, but for the public who have waited with bated breath through this process, I wondered, could you give just a, a couple of key points where we are, where Heather is hailing from, just a couple of things so that the community sort of has an idea what to expect and can look forward to meeting her?
If you can give me a second, we had, I think most people know by now, we had a little bit of a technical issue here, so I don't have, in my eye, it hasn't been used.
And it's okay, Adam, if you don't, perhaps we can.
I would like to, I would like to, if you would give me a moment, but if you would like to ask other questions or maybe share, Mayor, if you'd like to share a little bit about the interview process or your own observations, that too would be fine. But give me a moment, and I will, I will pull up information.
Yeah, I happen to have her letter and her resume up. If, I know you're having technical difficulties, so I'm happy to share some of the highlights of her skills and experience and background. If you're, if you're.
That'd be great, thank you, thank you.
Oh, sure. So, let me just share that it was, like Adam said, a very strong candidate pool and pretty rigorous interviewing process. And we spent probably three or four hours with the final candidates. But so Heather serves as the top executive of the Tamalpais Community Service District, which, as we learned more, is a very similar community to ours in terms of budget size and population size and a commitment to the environment and climate. She, as far as her experience before serving in this capacity for the past three years, she worked with the city of Menlo Park as, as the environmental programs manager and sustainability manager. And led a number of environmental efforts in that role. Prior to that, she worked for CH2M as client service manager. She has also worked for Waste Prevention in Central Contra Costa County, and she's worked for the city of El Cerrito as well. I'm trying to find, excited, we're, she's got, so she has a Masters of Business Administration, Harvard Kennedy School Executive Public Leadership. Barbara, what is the role she serves for the, the women's organization? I can't remember what that was.
I think it's Women in Government. She has been, I think she's been courted to be the president, but.
Yeah, women leading government, WLG, I see, yeah. She's also serves with Renee on the Marin Zero Waste Local Task Force. And she's Marin Special District Association President of the Board. So I think, I don't want to speak for everyone, but I'm pretty sure based on the comments from, from our process that, you know, her skills and experience and also really noteworthy is how she's led some very difficult community efforts, including rate hikes in the Tamalpais District. And we just feel very, very fortunate that she has the skills to serve and serve very, very effectively in our community. Is there any other questions for Adam? I, no, okay, I do.
No questions, but I'll, I just would like to thank all of the council and Adam in particular, among our staff, and Heather Renssler, who led the search process for us. It was quite a long process, we've had many meetings about this, and I think it went very well, and feel good about the outcome.
Thank you, Councilmember Ackerman. So I do have a statement from Heather that I'd like to share. She offers, "I'm excited and honored to be selected as the next town manager for Fairfax. The town of Fairfax is such a wonderful, special place, I cannot wait to get started. I have found the town council, staff, and residents to be thoughtful, hardworking, and forward-thinking. As we tackle the challenges of the years ahead together, I look forward to engaging with everyone and becoming part of the town fabric." Okay. So let's open the public comment for this item, please. Members of the public wishing to comment, please raise your hand on Zoom now or press star nine if you're on the phone, and you'll have up to three minutes to speak. Michelle? I don't know that we have any.
It doesn't, yes, Mrs. Mayor, it doesn't look like anybody has raised their hand. We're called in.
Give it another couple seconds. Okay, I'm closing the public comment period and bringing this item back to the council for deliberation and action. Are we ready to make a motion?
I'm ready to do so, I don't know if others are, but if people don't mind it, I'd be happy to make a motion to adopt the resolution appointing Heather Abrams as town manager for the town of Fairfax and approving the employment agreement.
You have a second?
Second. I was waiting for you guys.
Motion Kohler, second Goddard. Michelle, will you please take the roll call vote?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Ackerman.
Yes.
Councilmember Kohler.
Yes.
Councilmember Goddard.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cutrano.
Enthusiastic, yes.
And Mayor Hellman.
Yes, and I echo the comments from Councilmember Ackerman. Thank you, Adam, thank you, Heather. Really blessed to have a really effective process, and we're delighted with the selection.
Madam Mayor, if I may, I think it's important to let the community know that we'll send out a press release either late tonight or tomorrow with all of those accolades and obviously her past experience laid out, so that, I'm sorry that I fumbled over that, and I appreciate the mayor stepping in. But Heather Abrams comes with a pretty distinguished career in local government, and it's really important for the community to see that. So that'll be out in our press release here, and then we'll schedule a meet and greet in the new year, so the community has an opportunity to meet her in person. So I know, as you stated in her statement, Madam Mayor, she is very excited to join our team, very excited to meet and work with our community. So thank you very much.
Okay, thank you all. I'm adjourning the regular meeting and calling to order the two special meetings of December 15th, 2021. Both meetings are now open and running concurrently. Michelle, can I have a roll call, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Kohler.
Here.
Councilmember Goddard.
Here.
Councilmember Ackerman.
Here.
Vice Mayor Cutrano.
Present.
And Mayor Hellman.
I'm present, thank you.
All present.
Okay. Okay, would somebody like to make a motion to approve the agendas and affidavits of posting for both special meetings?
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion Goddard, second Ackerman. Michelle, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes. Councilmember Kohler.
Yes.
Councilmember Goddard.
Yes.
Councilmember Ackerman.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cutrano.
Yes.
And Mayor Hellman.
Yes.
Eyes all.
Thank you. Do I have a volunteer to read the land acknowledgement? Councilmember Goddard, thank you.
Thank you. The Fairfax Town Council acknowledges that we are located on the unceded ancestral lands of the Coast Miwok people of present-day Marin County. We honor with gratitude the land itself and all of its ancestors, past, present, and emerging.
Thank you. Okay, meeting protocol, the mayor shall maintain order at these meetings. The council and the audience are expected to refrain from using profound language or ridiculing the character or motives of council members, staff, or members of the public, and to maintain the standards of tolerance and civility. Please turn off all cell phones or place in silent mode. The town council will review the agenda at 10:00 PM. To ascertain which items, if any, will be continued to another meeting. Any matter not started by 11:30 PM will be continued to an adjourned or regular meeting, unless the council votes to suspend this rule. I would like to start with special meeting number two, which was called tonight so that we could consider an emergency resolution. So that is item number one, adopter resolution declaring the existence of a local emergency at or near 2378 Sir Francis Drake Boulevard, Fairfax, and authorizing the emergency procurement of materials and labor without competitive bidding. Mr. Goldman, may we have the staff report, please?
Madam Mayor, if I can disintroduce this item before our public works director gets into the details, but obviously, due to the rains and storms that we've had over the last couple of months, we've had significant impacts here in our community, and just recently, it was brought to our attention of the undermining of the roadway on Sir Francis Drake in 2300 block. And our interim public works director is going to get into other details. But I really do want to take a moment and thank our public works director and our building official, Mark Lockaby, and our police department, you know, really working together with our various consultants to address this issue quickly, try to create as least amount of disruption to our community as possible when you're closing a lane on the major artery coming through town. But a lot of effort and hard work went into making these decisions, and none of the decisions were taken lightly, understanding the impacts and the consequences of any of our actions put people at risk. But this was really that level of a dire concern. And so I want to commend our interim public works director Jonathan for his leadership here and his teamwork with all involved, including our, our town clerk and our town attorney, to get us to this moment this evening. Jonathan, I'd like to turn it over to you, and at the end of your presentation, council members, and we're all here to answer your questions if you have them. Thank you.
Thank you all. For those of you who don't know me, I know that the council does, but members of the community who don't, my name's Jonathan Goldman, I'm the interim public works director and have been acting in this capacity since August. I'll preface this by adding a couple of elements of recognition to what the interim town manager just said. The longer I've been involved in this particular situation, the more I appreciate the fact that someone who walks this route regularly noticed on Monday morning that something was wrong and had the presence of mind to call, I believe, the Fairfax Police Department. And our, the watch commander on duty happens to have had a long career of public service in the town of Fairfax, as does our building official. And the two of them jointly recognized that there was potentially a pretty serious issue here, and were able to close the sidewalk to protect against the possibility that someone might be injured there, as well as bring in other resources to try to very quickly assess the magnitude and extent of the problem. I won't read the whole staff report, and, and I encourage members of the public, I realize that this came up very quickly, the incident was only first noticed in the morning on Monday. The staff report has the details available at the time the staff report was written. Those details are changing as we continue to discover additional information. But we identified a hazardous condition that, again, because of an alert pedestrian, in my opinion, probably saved lives. And under the circumstances, I just, I, I get very emotional about that. I think that we're very fortunate, and I'm glad that, that the town has the resources and the people involved to be able to put these pieces together quickly. Same with respect to Majora and Gelati Incorporated. That was one of the first calls that I made, based on my experience with that firm and the service that they've provided, not only to the town of Fairfax over the years, but also to city of Salcelito and other jurisdictions within the county. So the short version of this is that we have, you know, an imminent hazard here, and we've taken actions to immediately protect the public against those, those hazards, and do everything we can within, within our ability to restore safe use of the public right of way there, safe use of Sir Francis Drake as quickly as possible. And in order to accomplish that, you know, we're asking, respectfully asking the town council to make the findings contained in the staff report and the draft resolution, and continue to, and give the town manager the authority to enter into this emergency contract until the emergency can be abated, at which time we can then reopen the roadway, and to the extent there are other things that need to be done that are, don't need to be done on an emergency basis, those can then be deliberately designed and permitted and constructed by bidding. So at this point, I'll just leave it open for questions, and I know that the town attorney is also available to answer questions, and appreciate your ability to get this on the agenda as quickly as we have and take these actions.
Thank you, Jonathan, and Adam. Vice Mayor Cutrano, I see you have a question?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much, Jonathan, for all the work, and it's ongoing, clearly. I was curious, as this situation has developed, for members of the public watching or watching the recording, you know, is there any sense of a timeline or anything like that with regard to the, the one lane of Sir Francis Drake, or is it all still sort of, you know, touch and go as we learn more about the real, like what the real severity of the situation is?
It's not really touch and go because of lack of knowledge about severity. That was apparent right away, and as soon as we got the lane closed and were able to start removing overburdened material where there wasn't any, the, fundamentally, the problem is that the, the base of a retaining wall that was constructed in approximately 1995, my understanding, being on an emergency basis because of a roadway failure. The, the base of the wall was undermined, and what happens then is that creek water was able to get behind the wall and start eroding away the subgrade, the material holding up the roadway. The, the challenges are largely identifying and then prioritizing or, or coming up with preferred alternatives for, you know, reestablishing the safety of the roadway. That's not necessarily straightforward and easy, but it's a lot more straightforward and easy than making sure that whatever materials are necessary to accomplish that are available. So for example, steel sheet piles are not particularly available. It kind of reminds me of the situation that I shared with council in the last Capital Projects update, where there's no high-density polyethylene pipe fusible pipe available almost anywhere in the, anywhere in the country of certain sizes. So we do have, and the town has the benefit of a long-term relationship, working relationship with the consulting town engineering firm, Miller Pacific Engineering. You know, to be honest, Gary and Scott Gelati, who are president and vice president of Majora and Gelati, have, you know, decades of experience with these kinds of issues. So we have a very successful collaboration, a collaborative process of both investigating the conditions and then identifying and, and then evaluating and putting into place, basically on a daily basis, alternatives to try to come up with, with an approach that results in, in the safe reopening of the roadway as quickly as possible. At this point, and, and, you know, these are, I don't want to overpromise, but at this point, it looks like we should be in a position to have prevented further erosion underneath the, underneath the wall and have, and have constructed, you know, a supplemental retaining wall that will allow us to start backfilling and restore the roadway subgrade early next week. And if things change, I will certainly make sure that the council is apprised of that. But we're, we're doing everything that we can, including working on the weekend to get Sir Francis Drake safely opened as soon as we can.
Any other questions? Councilmember Kohler?
Yeah, thank you, Jonathan, for the quick action. I know that you're not in charge of this, but on the first day, there was a nixle alert sent out by, I believe, the police department. And I think it would be a good idea if they would send out subsequent nixles. I mean, Chance and I live past there, so we see it. And I know there's information on the town's website, but most people aren't reading that all the time. So if you could maybe talk to your colleagues in the police department and just ask that they send out daily reminders of the nixle, at least with an idea that it's going to be a few days, we know that for sure, so that people will remember, you know, that they're going to hit some delays, and we don't want too many people going through that area to the extent feasible. So just a suggestion, thank you very much.
Councilmember Goddard?
Can I just, can I just comment quickly on Councilmember Kohler's comment there? And we will pass that on to the police department, thank you. But it is also important to note that our communications manager has been updating and sending information out through the newsletter and through social media and the website. So we'll keep, we'll make sure that we keep updating that information as well. So that's a very good reminder, thank you very much.
Adam, related to that, is she in direct contact with White Hill School?
I, I don't think she's in direct contact with anyone other than our interim public works director in terms of getting content, you know, and updates. So she's not, she's not reaching out directly to any of our partners or neighbors, but we can, we can.
Yeah, I mean, in this weather, it's, it, there's more, there's more cars on the road because the people don't want their kids riding in the rain. I have a son at, at White Hill, and so I've noticed it's been, it's been a lot, a lot of backup, as we all know. And the good news is there's just two more days before the holiday break for two weeks. But I, I think it would be great if, and I can give you. But I think it would be great if, and I can give you the principal's email address, if that's helpful.
I think we include Ross Valley School District Superintendent, because we've also got Manor School. And, I mean, that's great, and then...
I think Manor is before the, the...
No, it's not.
Oh, it's not? Okay. It's west of it, okay.
Yeah, and then the other piece of it is, I'm not sure if we're using Nextdoor, but we push out information on Nextdoor. So, that's another avenue, Adam, for Camille. I'm not sure that she does that, but, you know, just getting the word out will be great. Thank you.
Councilmember Goddard?
Yeah, thank you. And obviously, first and primary is the, is the quick action to make sure that everyone is safe. But if, I wanted to ask about the fiscal side of this. I noticed fiscal impact, the number, and I don't have it in front of me, I'm afraid I didn't print it, but $250,000 was mentioned. And I'm just curious about, in situations like this where we have a local emergency, is there, is it reimbursable? Is it FEMA? How does our town insurance kick in in a situation like this? Adam, do you have that information?
We don't have that information and unfortunately, it may take some time for us to work through that, but we are reaching out to the county and exercising those relationships to understand what will be eligible. And part of it could be based on what caused the damage and when did that damage originally start. So, it's a, unfortunately, it's a very difficult and long process and we may, from going through it in my previous job, it, you know, it takes, it could take up to a year or two to get the final answer. But where, you know, and they give you all the right information at the beginning to give you hope and then when they start coming out and doing their own investigation, then it gets a little more tricky. So, I trust that, you know, our interim public works director and Jordan Gelati and Miller Pacific, we have the team in place to put ourselves in a strong position. But because this, the recent event, even the event from October, didn't necessarily trigger a county or state or federal emergency, so we're declaring a local emergency and that has its own process that we'll have to work our way through. But it's on our list, we'll work with the town attorney and others to put ourselves in the strongest position to qualify for all the outside funding that is possible.
Excellent, thank you.
If there's no further questions, I'm going to open the public comment. Okay, members of the public wishing to comment on this item, please raise your hand and zoom now or press star nine if you are calling in.
I am looking and I don't see any raised hands.
I'm going to give it another second.
Okay.
Okay, I'm closing the public comment period and bringing this back to council for deliberation and action.
Mayor, I'm happy to, I'm happy to make a motion if there's no comment from my colleagues.
All right, let's do that. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, so I move to find that the recitals and the attached emergency resolution are true and correct, find and determine based on substantial evidence in this staff report and oral testimony the existence of a local emergency at or in the vicinity of 2378 Sir Francis Drake Boulevard, Fairfax, Marin County, California, and order and authorize the interim town manager to provide for the emergency repair or replacement of those public facilities necessary to stabilize conditions and reopen the roadway in the vicinity of 2378 Sir Francis Drake Boulevard, to take any directly related and immediate action required by those emergency conditions, and to procure the necessary equipment, services, and supplies for those purposes without giving notice, forbid to let contracts pursuant to Public Contract Code Sections 22035 and 22050. Said contracts may exceed the town manager's purchasing authority but shall not exceed $250,000 for construction and $25,000 for design, construction, management costs without further approval by the town council.
Do we need a friendly amendment that says adopt a resolution or did you already say that, Vice Mayor? I may have missed it.
Sure, if it wasn't in the, whatever the recommendation at the staff, end of the staff report is, then I'm absolutely willing to take that friendly amendment.
Okay, do you have a second?
So, I think Bruce seconded.
Yes, I'll second it, both to make the findings and to adopt the resolution.
Thank you. Okay, motion, Cutrano, second. Ackerman. Michelle, will you take a roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Kohler?
Yes.
Councilmember Goddard?
Yes.
Councilmember Ackerman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cutrano?
Yes.
And Mayor Hellman?
Yes.
Eyes all, and all you needed was a four-fifths vote. Motion passes.
Thank you. I'm adjourning this special meeting number two and moving on to the agenda for the other December 15th special meeting. We will start with the consent calendar. The council may approve the entire consent calendar with one action in the alternative items, only consent calendar may be removed by any town council member or staff member for separate discussion and vote. The opportunity for public comment on consent calendar items will occur prior to the council's vote on the consent calendar. Before we go to public comment, or do we have any questions? Renee?
Well, it's okay, it's a comment. After public comment, I'll comment.
Okay. Anyone else? Nope, okay. Are there any, I'm opening the, I'm opening the public comment now. Are there any members of the public who would like to comment on the consent items? If so, please raise your hand and zoom or press star nine if you are calling in.
Adam, Mayor, I see no raised hands at this time.
Okay. I will now close the public comment period and bring it back to council for any comments. And then we can entertain a motion. Councilmember Goddard?
Yeah, if I may, I just wanted to make a comment on item number three. And that is just to express my gratitude for Jesse Hoffman and his service on the Fairfax Volunteers. From the second he joined the Volunteers, he has done nothing but show up and show up with such a positive spirit and generosity and everything that he's done down to last weekend with the reef making event. There was a little bit of a snafu with the greens, but Jesse kicked into action and he was able to procure greens from random Christmas tree lots around the county and showed the kind of creativity and ingenuity that we love to see on our boards and commissions. So, if you're listening out there, Jesse, much appreciation for your service and very glad that you are stepping up to, to fill another term.
Vice Mayor Cutrano?
Yeah, I just want to echo those sentiments coming from the volunteer board. I had the pleasure of working alongside Jesse and such an invaluable member of that, that board and we're so lucky to have him and to have him re-up his commitment. So, thank you, Jesse. And also, just wanted to thank Bruce for, for his work at the mosquito vector control board, something that people don't talk about a lot is whatever goes on there, but it is important. So, thank you, Bruce.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Kohler?
Yeah, well, first I want to thank Bruce for doing the vector control board, which is kind of a, we don't talk about it enough, but I think it's been going really well. So, thank you, Bruce. And also, Jesse Hoffman is my neighbor and he has been just a dynamo on that volunteer board and I personally thanked him for stepping up again, but I just want to acknowledge that he is, you know, somebody, the volunteer of all volunteers, how he always kicks into gear and I'm glad to hear about the reef making. Because I know I saw him taking off with Katie to go and I didn't realize that he had to go all over and find more greens. So, thank you and somebody, I can make the motion to prove the...
I just want to echo everyone's comments, thank you. I've had the pleasure of getting to know Jesse on the mural project and saving the redwoods, or I forget what we called that, but in Perry Park. And he is absolutely such a dedicated community member, I'm very grateful for him. And thank you, Bruce, for your work on the...
Yeah, I can say just a word and my thanks to Jesse as well. I'll just say a couple of words about the mosquito board because it is actually a pretty interesting agency. It is the oldest public agency, I believe, in the county, formed in the 1930s by the Women's Auxiliary, back when apparently mosquitoes and malaria were a pretty major problem. So, part of the fact that we don't think very much about mosquitoes in Marin right now is due to some really concerted effort to, to deal with that. And that's mostly the effort to abate habitat and try to control the breeding grounds of mosquitoes. And just one other thing, and it's a very large board because it is two counties, so it's a huge room. And the, that, that agency happens to be, as far as I know, the first public agency and, at least in our county, to start going with electric vehicles. So, that's pretty impressive as well. So, well-run agency. Anyway, thank you for your opportunity to continue serving.
Absolutely. Thank you. Okay, anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Second. Okay, motion, Kohler, second, Goddard. Michelle, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor. Councilmember Kohler?
Yes.
Councilmember Goddard?
Yes.
Councilmember Ackerman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cutrano?
Yes.
And Mayor Hellman?
Yes.
All eyes.
Thank you. We will now move on to the public hearings. Item number four, adopt a resolution establishing maximum rates collected by Marin Sanitary Service for solid waste services to be effective January 1, 2022, and approving the third amendment to the franchise agreement with Marin Sanitary Service. And I believe the staff report will be provided by Mr. Jonathan Goldman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Again, Vice Mayor Cutrano, members of the council, staff and members of the community, your interim public works director. My task this evening is, on this item is pretty straightforward. There's a lot of information in the staff report and I won't read it because I don't think that would serve anybody's purpose as well. The purpose, the recommendation this evening is that the council and the community hear a presentation from Garth Schultz, who is our consultant with R3, conduct a public hearing, and then adopt a resolution establishing those rates as described earlier, as well as an amendment to the franchise agreement. With that, I would like to believe that Garth has a PowerPoint presentation and not only is he here, which I greatly appreciate, but our town attorney, Janet Colson, and our interim town manager, are all of us available to answer questions. So, take it away, Garth.
Thank you, Jonathan, Honorable Mayor and Vice Mayor, council members. Garth Schultz with R3 Consulting Group, lovely to see you all again. As a reminder for council and the public, we are the consultant serving the broader Marin Franchisers Group, which is the informal association of the seven agencies that contract for solid waste collection services with Marin Sanitary Services. So, we serve under a contract with the city of San Rafael that benefits broadly the seven agencies in terms of the review of their rate applications, indexed rate adjustment applications that come in from Marin Sanitary Service on an annual basis. I have a short presentation covering the scope of the review and the outcomes of it for the coming 2022 year, and then I can also make a few brief comments with respect to the amendment, though also your city attorney can speak to that in more detail. So, here is the presentation. Should be up on the screen, if I can just get a thumbs up or a nod, just to make sure we're good. All right, thank you so much. As a reminder, we serve you and public agencies, we don't work for MSS, we work at the behest of the public agencies and your rate pairs. Okay. All right, so here's what I'll cover, give you an overview and a refresher on the rate adjustment methodology in your franchise agreement with Marin Sanitary Service. Talk about the factors that affect this year's rate adjustment, provide you with the overview on what the final adjustment numbers that are recommended for adoption are, compare your rates to other agencies in Marin County, and then take your questions and answers. Okay, so, within the agreement that you have with Marin Sanitary Service, and this is identical across the seven member agencies, or sorry, franchising agencies, is this indexed rate adjustment methodology. This is the annual rate adjustment methodology for virtually all years, except that every five years, Marin Sanitary Service can call for a cost-based rate adjustment methodology or in other times at which you and Marin San agreed to do a detailed rate review, you may do so. That isn't this year, that's some years in the future until that first five-year opportunity becomes available. The purpose of the indexed rate adjustment methodology is to adjust rate revenues based on a streamlined approach that's cost-effective to achieve transparent and predictable rate adjustments. So, it's, you know, for much of the rate revenues that are generated, it's not based on Marin Sanitary Service's costs. And in fact, this is germane to bullet point one here, for, you know, roughly 60% of the overall rate that is paid to Marin Sanitary Service, that goes for their collection operations, that's the collection of the garbage and green waste and recycling from residents and businesses throughout the community. That, that component of the rate, that 60-plus percent, is adjusted annually based on this nationwide Bureau of Labor Statistics market index. So, it's not based on actual cost, you're controlling the revenue going to the company based on this posted index called the Water Sewer Trash Index. Essentially, it's a CPI for public water, sewer, and trash utilities. So, that's the main overall component, that's the majority of the compensation to the company. The other components is listed below in order. There's a component, 15% of the overall rate, which is to compensate Marin Sanitary Service for landfilling, recycling, and organics processing and disposal. For the landfilling and organics, those are costs that are external to the company and they're based on a per-ton tip fee that's set by Redwood Landfill and Composting Facility, and then, of course, the number of tons that are generated and collected within the town in any given year. For recycling, it's also based on the number of tons and the per-ton rate. Marin Sanitary Service has a sister company, Marin Resource Recovery Association, that processes those materials, and that also essentially establishes a per-ton rate. But that per-ton rate floats in accordance with what's going on in the recyclables commodities market, and as I'll share on the next slide, there's actually good news around that for this coming rate year. A third component of the rate is for state compliance. This is primarily SB 1383, which the town has heard about already through adoption of your ordinance. That is negotiated and adjusted based on needs. For this year, that includes inclusion of new routes throughout the seven agencies. So, it's essentially new trucks and drivers to collect more organic materials from residents and businesses, and includes new outreach and education staff to meet the elevated expectations for outreach and education, which are detailed in the amendment that's before you tonight. And it's also compensation for reporting functions, there's detailed reporting that must be provided to the state by the town and the other agencies on an annual basis pursuant to the amendment that's before you. MSS is going to be your partner in doing so. And then a final piece is a piece of infrastructure at their indoor dump and recycling facility to help facilitate cleaning of inbound organics so that it can go to the food-to-energy program. A fourth component is for, to compensate Marin Sanitary Service for a reasonable operating margin or profit. It's approximately 8% of rate revenues. It's important to note, those aren't guaranteed, so this isn't a cost-plus-profit-based arrangement. You compensate them based on a formula, it's incumbent upon... It's incumbent upon the company to operate their operations and their control their expenses within the revenues that the rates provide. If their expenses exceed the allowance in the rate revenues, then they make less of a profit. The converse is true, but it's not a guaranteed overall approach. Final component is government fees. That's fifteen percent of the overall rate. To break it down, that's a ten percent franchise fee that the town collects on gross rate revenues, vehicle impact fee, brush clearing fee, other fees. This also includes the zero-waste Marin fees, and these are set to actual so that those fees are paid as a pass-through. Now, given all of those components, this slide kind of tells you what's happening with each of them for this twenty twenty-two rate year. So again, for that Marin Sanitary Service collection operations, that sixty-plus percent, that is being adjusted by the WST index. That's three-point-five-seven percent increase for this year. That's just a generated number off the online database. And that's consistent across all of the agencies. For post-collection landfilling, organics and recycling, sorry, the subtitle's missing the recycling there, but it is all three of those components. Garbage and organics tipping fees also get adjusted by the WST. And then tons are actually, sorry, typo there, tons are down. Tons are down, resulting in a decrease to this component of three-point-seven-five percent. This is largely COVID-related in terms of, you know, reductions to commercial subscriptions and what that means for waste generation. We would also hope that there's an element of zero-waste uptake and adoption. I think there is an opportunity here for the town in coming out of the pandemic over the course of the coming several years to still seek to keep tonnages flat or even reduce tonnages further, which then translates into a reduction into this portion of the overall rate going forward. So instead of tons are up, that should have been down, but it is a resultant decrease and it's part of the component of three-point-seven-five percent. The recycling tipping fee is also good news. It's there's a processing cost component for, you know, the machines and the belts and the people that are sorting through the materials in order to prepare them for the market. That's adjusted by WST so that it's escalated in that way. But the sales of recyclable materials is based on what's actually being received in the marketplace. And the good news in this prior year, which is the basis of forecasting next year, is that the recyclable commodities value increased, resulting in a decrease in the amount that rate pairs pay for recycling. So the end result there is a credit or savings to rate pairs. This is a bit of a success story with respect to this portion of the methodology because it's relatively new to the town and the other agencies. This is really the first time you've been able to share in the kind of rewards of a recovering recyclables commodity market. The state compliance component, that's the one percent of the rate that I mentioned on the previous slide. That's around twenty-two thousand in new revenues to cover the organics route, the education, the tracking database, consulting support provided by our firm to the agencies to help plan for SB thirteen eighty-three implementation that relates to the ordinance you passed and other compliance and planning documents that we're providing to the agencies to facilitate full compliance with SB thirteen eighty-three law. The operating from profit component really just floats in accordance with the above. So it's a three-point-two percent increase for this year. That's the sum total effect of the other components that are shown above. The government fees component, there is a reduction in the zero-waste Marin fees, which is largely due to the fact that last year they were a little higher than they needed to be to make up for an under-collection in prior years. Here on forth this year and going forward, they're being set to actual as set by the Zero Waste Marin Board. So it is a bit of a credit to the rate pair this year. Your franchise fee component, because it's based on ten percent of gross rate revenues, is increasing with the overall increase in the rate at one-point-one-six percent, which leads me into the next slide. The sum total result of the index methodology for this year yields for Fairfax a one-point-one-six percent increase in your rates effective January one. To bring that down to, you know, common terms, for your most commonly subscribed to thirty-two-gallon rate pair, that's an increase of just over fifty cents a month, going from forty-four eighty cents to forty-five dollars and thirty-two cents as shown here. And then for an example of what that looks like for a commercial rate pair, because commercial rate pairs have all sorts of different types of configuration. There is no standard size. An example for a three-cubic yard collected once weekly is that their rate would go up seven dollars and sixteen cents per month. Now, with respect to where this means in terms of the town's comparability to other agencies in Marin County, you're on the lower quadrant of the comparison for your residential rates. The average amongst the agencies shown here is just over fifty-one dollars a month. You're just over forty-five dollars a month. So comparing favorably to others within the county. With that, happy to take what questions you may have. And then your next steps, of course, would be moving into the rate hearing and rate adoption. A final note with respect to the other item that's on the agenda around the amendment to the franchise agreement, the services that MSS is committing to provide to the town in the franchise amendment do two things. One, they provide the town with coverage for certain obligations that the town has around compliance with SB thirteen eighty-three. To summarize them briefly, that's monitoring of waste generators to make sure they're complying with the law, providing periodic contamination route reviews and audits, which is also required under the law. If you didn't delegate those to Marin Sanitary Service, you'd have to find other means of being able to conduct those activities. There's also outreach and education and reporting functions, all of which are public agency obligations, but which most commonly, public agencies are contracting for those services with their franchisees because they're the closest to those activities. All of what's shown in that amendment is included within the rate adjustment that's before you here. So ultimately setting you up for a good pathway to compliance in the new year. That's it. Thank you so much for your time. Happy to take your questions.
Thank you. Okay, any questions for staff or R three Vice Mayor Cutrano? I see your hand is up.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, thank you so much, Garth, for being here and for all you do for us, advising us on these matters. I had two quick questions. One is just gauging, you know, to the best of your knowledge, I was excited to see that, to, you know, as you were saying, we're sort of sharing in the rewards of a recovering recyclables market. And I was wondering if you see that as like a trend that's continuing with like extended producer responsibility and things like that, if there are going to be more end uses for the products that are coming through our waste stream. And so this will be like an ongoing sort of earnings or thing that we'll benefit from.
That's a great question. It's hard to predict. The recyclables commodities market has been prone to such fluctuations in recent years. I mean, some of that's policy-driven, such as Chinese China's national sword in twenty seventeen, which really just limited the demand for many of these materials, which caused the price to plummet. But it is a part of a global commodities trading mechanism. So there's other impacts and, you know, kind of variables that go into what those revenues are going to be. So, you know, I would say don't count on it, frankly. We had, you know, a period of a long-term ramp-up of growth in those values, followed by a steep decline that perpetuated for several years. This is a nice recovery and it's certainly helpful, but I wouldn't bank on it continuing to increase over the course of time. With respect to your question around EPR, it's a great question, but EPR is going to have a different impact. EPR is going to reduce the problematic materials in your waste streams that cost money to dispose of or recycle or become contaminants into recycling streams. So, you know, in essence, they'll help reduce the overall waste generation load and may help reduce contamination in the outgoing commodities, but it doesn't really influence the kind of market demand of pricing for those commodities.
Got it. It's just sort of like potentially an ancillary effect. If you have less and less contamination, more and more of the the things in the waste stream might be things that are actually recoverable. Is that, that's right?
Correct, and just in less costly to process because you have fewer things that you need to sort out. That's, you know, that's essentially the thrust of it.
Great, thank you. One other question, and then I have like a final bigger question. I noticed in the staff report, and I know that the MSS folks are here, that their premiums dramatically increased. And I was wondering, how does that, does that play into their operating profits? Or where does that show up in this? Does that get passed on to rate pairs? And is that going to be another ongoing thing that we're going to be seeing too?
Yeah. Yeah, good question. So the premiums actually decreased recently, but had increased in prior years. And and that's due to no fault of theirs. Really what that's associated with is the fact that material recovery facilities across the nation keep catching on fire. And they keep catching on fire because of lithium-ion batteries that people put in their recycling containers. And when lithium-ion batteries are subject to a force or a forklift running on over them, they generate a very heat-intensive chemical reaction. I mean, it's a fire, but it's a fire that you can't put out with water. So it's, it is caused, you know, pretty serious fires throughout the country and on an escalating trend over the course of the last several years, to which the insurance agencies are essentially reacting by lifting the insurance premiums for those types of facilities across the nation. So they they experienced last year a spike in the premiums. This is actually a bit of a reduction. I don't suspect that that's going to continue to escalate. And it's not due to any fault or incident at Marin Sanitary Service's operation. It's just a market trend.
Totally. Thank you. Yeah, it was super clear in the staff report that it was at no fault of MSS and they're just beneficiaries of a problem with coverage nationally. The final question I had is related to this, the rate increase itself. So my understanding was that there was a floor to the contract that was approved in Jan of twenty twenty. There was a floor. And then there was also a ceiling, and it was maybe like two-point-five percent to five percent. And so the rate increase that we're seeing, which is below the anticipated floor of two-point-five percent, is that simply because we're deducting the franchise fees and impact fees that we're receiving from that that percentage?
Close. So and this is where I realize our report, the sentence that refers to the cap and the ceiling or the cap and the floor is could be worded a little bit better. That that floor and that ceiling applies just to that collector operations component, which is the sixty-percent odd, you know, component of the rate that is compensating MSS for their collection operations. So it's really only with respect to that majority component. So it will be at a minimum two-point-five or a maximum five percent adjustment to that component over time. But then that will be, you know, added to or offset by changes in the disposal numbers, the recycling numbers, the agency fees and the like. So your answer is partially correct, but it's really just that it applies only to that one proportion of the rate.
Got it. Okay, great. Thank you very much, Garth. I appreciate it. That's all my questions, Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Any other questions from the council? Okay, Chance, you covered off on the couple that I had, so thank you.
I had a, I had a couple.
You, I didn't, sorry, I missed you. I didn't see you. Go ahead.
Okay, and Garth, I did appreciate the responses to the questions that I sent, and some of them were the same as Chance's. So glad that we all got that. We're on the same page. One of the things that I'm particularly interested in and concerned about, actually, from just previous experience in here is how we're going to monitor the contamination. And Justin did send me an excellent explanation. But I thought it important just to sort of have you guys explain it just a little bit because I know that we're not looking at citation or really any kind of monetary punitive measures until twenty twenty-four. But I'm trying to understand the matrix that he sent in terms of, I think, where he sent me that if you've got less than fifteen hundred, the root size for the garbage accounts, that the minimum number of containers that they'd be actually looking at were twenty-five. I'm just trying to understand how we're going to get a good sampling of what people are doing and how we're complying with thirteen eighty-three if we don't, if they don't make those efforts a little more robust, but.
Yeah. Excellent questions. So, forgive me, my little earbuds just beeped at me. Can you all still hear me? Okay, didn't change anything. Okay, good. I never know what they're going to do. So there's two sides to your question around contamination. There's, you know, the compliance with the SB thirteen eighty-three expectations and making sure that you're doing what the law requires. And then there's, I think, the more practical side, which is how are you getting meaningful information around what's going on in your recycling and organic streams to make sure that you're minimizing contamination and addressing the root causes of contamination? So addressing the first part of the question, what's included in the franchise amendment before you is essentially what was also provided in that response.
Garth, at least to me, you're going in and out.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just going to take it off and I'm just going to put on speaker. Give me thirty seconds.
Okay, thanks.
I should be better now. Okay, excellent. I apologize for that. That headset is a little quirky. So there's the, the, the franchise amendment details essentially a minimum expectation around route sampling for contamination monitoring. And the state has essentially said you need to sample enough containers on routes to come up with, you know, a meaningful set of findings around what's going on. And it's on a periodic basis. So it's, you know, it's kind of ongoing throughout the course of any agreement year. And so it's, you know, what those metrics, those are kind of put out by the state, embedded by us, at least in terms of their efficacy and statistical validity, is that you can get a good sense of what's going on within the the overall community by sampling that number of containers on routes over the course of time. It's enough of a population to sample from to draw some reasonable conclusions around what's going on. Outside of that, though, and that's just a contamination monitoring requirement, there is, of course, still every ability to, when a driver notices contamination in a set of contamination protocols, to say, hey, your container was contaminated. We're going to leave a car hanger. We're going to provide information around that. So that's less of the SB thirteen eighty-three requirement side of the equation and more the practical customer service and feedback side of the equation. I would have MSS speak more to the the customer service and actual operational approach piece of that. So I'm hoping we can defer their their actual on-the-ground implementation of that to them. But the agreement is covering the or the agreement, the amendment to the agreement is covering Cal Recycles' expectations for how often you're monitoring that. You know, there is, of course, other points of input for MSS in that when those, when the materials are coming off of the truck, they can get the aggregate sense of what's going on on routes and whether additional outreach and education needs to be done across the community. So there's a few different ways that they can handle it. And I think that anything relating to kind of their more a progressive in advance of SB thirteen eighty-three efforts, I would ask that they answer when it comes to their their moment.
Okay, great. I have a couple of other things, if I may. One is in in Marin Sanitary's letter on page two, I don't know if everyone has that, the last paragraph, where they state that it's difficult, it's quite a long paragraph, but what I'm trying to understand is how that might affect our rates. And I will read it just so that the public knows what I'm talking about. "It's difficult to project increases in our costs as a result of these changes in the law," referring to thirteen eighty-three. "The changes are incremental and will occur over the next several years, during which time our pool of operating costs, subject to the waste sewer and trash indexing, will not compensate us cost increases related to these changes in law. However, our rate-setting methodology does allow us to recover anticipated additional costs associated with changes in law and/or new state and regulatory mandates." Could you just, could you just explain that?
Yeah, that's, so the the one percent component that I referred to is inclusive of their change in law projection for the coming year. And that's the addition of the additional routes, the addition of outreach and education staff and the addition of equipment at the facility to process organic waste and clean it. So it's it's kind of above and beyond what's in the the collector's operation component in the WST, but it's also fairly de minimis in terms of the grand scale of the overall rate adjustment. So I think that's what they're referring to here is that they did include in their application elements relating to SB thirteen eighty-three program implementation, and that's covered in the one-point-one-six that's before you this evening. I think the other thing they're trying to indicate there-
I think the other thing they're trying to indicate there is there may be more that comes up in the future. From, from my perspective, I can't anticipate yet what those are going to be because I believe you're already covering virtually everything that you need to. So, you know, there, there, there may be over the course of time, other new programs or services that between the franchising agencies and MSS, you decide you wish to implement, that may be in response to findings of Cal Recycle and reviewing compliance reports on a regular basis. Or it may be in response to add-on bills to SB 1383 that may come over the course of time. But with the law as it stands today and the expectations of the town of Fairfax and your waste generators and that which you delegated to MSS or may delegate to MSS through the franchise amendment before you this evening, you're pretty covered. So I'm not expecting other, you know, major costs or changes or, you know, other shoes to drop in future rate years. This application includes revenues to cover new programs and services in the coming year, and that would continue thereafter.
Okay, great. And very last thing, I just wanted to call attention to, and looking on the website today from Marin Sanitary, and this might be a time where Patty might, you know, jump in only because I was looking at the buyback, the CRV buyback center, and we all know that it is closed. I hoped that Patty might explain a little bit about what might go in its place. And then maybe it's just a heads up that we don't have any buyback centers and the closest is in Novato. There will be some requirements that we implement and actually find a place for a buyback. We're not in the business of buyback and, you know, CRV. But because there are none, there, this onus will fall on our small businesses. So with the closure, I, I know that that's been an issue for some small businesses and people who've reached out to me. But I know also that there is some exciting work happening to make things happen in that space at Marin Sanitary where that buyback center was. So I would like to hear a little bit more about some of the sorting, some of the future, the future programs that are coming, what Marin Sanitary is looking into. I know there's a debagging program being looked at or de-packaging. And all these things are very exciting. So with the loss of a buyback center, it sounds to me like we have some great programs coming our way that will give us a great bang for our buck. So if, when, at the appropriate time, Stephanie, to ask Marin Sanitary to let us know a little bit about that.
I see Patty is on and she has her hand raised. So Garth, unless you want to take that last one, I, we might be able to, if we're done with our questions, we can open to public and she's, she's got her hands raised first. So do we have any other questions or Garth, did you want to, do you like?
Well, just, I will provide just one bit of context on the, the buyback center and the CRV redemption center in specific. I just wanted to highlight for the town council's awareness that Zero Waste Marin, as a part of their updated zero-waste feasibility study that was adopted this summer, did identify funding for expansion of CRV opportunities in Marin County as a priority, along with, you know, kind of estimated funding amounts. That would be subject to the board's consideration in the new year as they approve their next fiscal year's budget. So there is, you know, I think opportunities there. The other thing I would add is I didn't evaluate Marin Sanitary Services, CRV Redemption Center and Buyback Center, but I have done it for other agencies. And there is a fundamental problem with the underlying processing payments paid by the state that just doesn't cover the cost of operations. And that's why throughout the state they've been shutting down. It's not isolated to Marin Sanitary Service. It's virtually a statewide problem. And so I highlight it for the town and for the community, which is, to the extent that those are priorities, you both have an opportunity with Zero Waste Marin, but also at the state legislature, who is still, you know, essentially debating or trying to design a, a fix to the CRV processing payment issue, which is the underlying issue that, you know, pushed those buyback centers and CRV centers to, to shutter over the course of the last few years.
Okay, thank you. And just for information, some of our, a couple of our small businesses received letters from Cal Recycle saying that they would be needing, responsible for paying fees unless they started collecting and then distributing the CRV value back to the customer. And they really absolutely freaked out because they don't have the capacity to do that. So I know that the governor has signed something to extend the deadline. I'm trying to figure this out for another year. So I really appreciate Garth hearing that Zero Waste Marin is looking into how to fund it. So that makes me feel much better. Thank you.
There's no further questions. I'm going to open the public hearing. Okay, members of the public wishing to speak on this item should raise your hands now on Zoom or press nine if you're calling in. Michelle, will you please call on the first speaker? Patty?
Yes, that's Patty. Patty Garberino? Oops. Just do, there. You're unmuted now, Patty.
There's no video.
There's no video, okay.
We can, we can hear you, Patty.
Thank you, Stephanie. I appreciate that. I'm here. And, and thank you to Garth. Thank you to staff. Thank you to the council for hearing our item this evening and your consideration. I'm here with Jason Raleigh, our CFO, and Ruben Hernandez, who assists us with legislation. The very same time, your agenda has completely tracked that of Larksburg. So two rooms away is Justin on Zoom with the City of Larksburg and my dad. They say hello as well, and this is a brave new world, isn't it, with all this technology? Used to be, I was explaining to these young folks, we would just scramble all over the county and try and catch up, right? But now we get to do it this way. Let me address some of what came up specifically. Renee, your concerns about the bottle bill. And it's tragic, I think, that Cal Recycles chose those two smaller, more businesses in Fairfax. We have not heard of letters going to other larger grocery stores or any other concern as a result of not having a buyback center in the area. And we closed ours as a result of the need, especially once COVID hit, the need for more space in the recycling center processing. Those of you who have come, and thank you so much to those of you that did take a tour of the facility. The recycling center itself, where the classroom is housed on the second floor, is where residential herb side collected recyclables are processed. A great deal has changed in that flow as per COVID. As you can imagine, packaging, single-use packaging, paper, plastics and the like. So we simply needed more sorting space. To go to the question of what is new, where we went down to Santa Barbara and actually had another presentation today about optical sort lines. So those jobs that were manual sorting that you saw will soon move into a wonderful space of optical sort. But in order to do that effectively, you need a longer surface and longer distance to be able to sort. And that will take the place of where buyback once was. Also, as you can imagine, the rather intimate relationship between customers coming in and selling their bottles and cans and perhaps liquid in them and our staff was not a safe situation. Which is why I believe the governor gave a pass on all of the buyback centers for at least a year. Ruben is also prepared to talk to us about contamination issues. But I just asked him if we know where that pause is on buyback centers. And we, we don't yet know. There is one in Novato. There's one in Petaluma. I'm sure they exist in Richmond, in the East Bay. But ours will not be opening again. Before I turn it over to Ruben to talk a bit about what we're doing, and we do a great deal on contamination, let me just say another little bit about the difference now in the recyclable waste flow. While it's vastly different than it was before, if you track what employers are talking about in terms of, are you going to bring all of your employees back? Will you not bring them back at all? Will it be a hybrid? It seems to land on hybrid. The feedback that I get from the Bay Area Council and the North Bay Leadership Council is that most businesses are going to bring their employees back two to three days a week, and that's for the foreseeable future. So we're going to have probably prolonged change in that recycling waste flow as people are home more and buying differently than they did before. I've talked a little bit about the optical sort in terms of the new technology. Other new technologies will be the debagger that you mentioned, Renee, which is really exciting if you can imagine something that takes a pallet of food, literally on a forklift, and then dumps it into a hopper, has two augers at the bottom, and then shoves that material through different screens. And this is food that cannot be consumed by humans or animals. It's dated, contaminated, or something's wrong with it and it can't be eaten. And then out comes 99.9% kind of an oatmeal mush that then goes into anaerobic digestion. The other piece is the whatever, the cardboard, the paper, the metal can. And it literally takes anything and just chews it up and sends that out into another spot. That material we can then recycle. The mush, if you will, is exactly like what we have now in food waste to energy and that flow. And that will go off to CMSA. And Jason Dow at CMSA is welcoming that material and that flow. That's been a bang-up project that we started in 2014 in a partnership with our franchisers group. In going forward, we anticipate a tripling of the flow of that material, more energy made from it. The ability then to be able to sell that onto the MCE grid is phenomenal. It actually decreases the volume. When you mix food with biosolids, the overall volume is decreased. So there's some sort of mystery about the science and what happens there. But what we will be doing is taking a look at that debagger. We went up to Anacortes last week and saw it in operation. And as I mentioned, it was phenomenal. And changing out the sort line that, and conveyors that feed the F2E program. And that you saw in the transfer station. In addition, we are also looking at biomass, and that will be for the dry AD. And through many, many good things, God's grace, people like Chance, others on the TAM board, we no longer will have a, if you can envision, an Oakland Cypress structure going through the center of our property. And that will be where we will do the dry AD. That too will be turned into energy. There's an option for energy. There's an option for hydro, the development of hydrogen, which we can then potentially, there's some really exciting things going on in fueling our fleet with hydrogen emerging. So we've got a meeting coming up in early January with a new group who are dealing with waste to hydrogen via technologies like biomass. That energy, if it doesn't go to hydrogen, will also be sold to MCE. And those are some of the new things that are going on. One last thing about the bottle bill. That seems to be the third rail in terms of legislation in Sacramento. There have been revisions to the bottle bill as, as Garth mentioned for years now. And the ability to make some significant changes is still a question in the future. And I have no idea why, why Cal Recycles will go after a couple of small businesses and scare them, but can't speak on it anyhow. So Ruben, do you want to talk about contamination?
Absolutely. Good evening, honorable mayor and council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak and address your concerns. To address council member Garth's concern about contamination, we already have a pretty robust contamination system in place. We had it for about two or three years now, where our drivers check for contamination in both the organics carts and the recycling carts as well. And they send a daily report, which I get and run. And then I distribute that report to our CSRs and our outreach team. And the drivers leave some kind of tag behind, noticing, notifying of the contamination to the customer that had that contamination. And then we contact the customer directly via a phone call or an email. This takes place every single day. And in addition to that, with SB 1383 requirements on route reviews, we're going to be, as Garth already mentioned, we're going to be conducting annual route reviews and all throughout our, our service areas. And when, even though the, the route reviews specify a minimum number of containers that need to be or stops that need to be reviewed, that doesn't necessarily, that doesn't necessarily mean that we're only going to review 25 stops in that route. That's the minimum requirement, but we could review more. And also, at each stop, we are going to be reviewing the three streams, the three waste streams, the landfill, the organics obviously, and the recyclables as well. So we already have in place a, a pretty good system of reviewing the, the carts and monitoring the contamination in place. And we are so lucky to have that system in place because that was a very nice dress rehearsal for SB 1383. So we are feeling confident that with the drivers being pretty much trained on the field for the past two years on this, and our new route auditor out there doing the route reviews, we'll be able to control the contamination and comply with this requirement of the SB 1383 regulations. Thank you. I hope that that addressed your questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ruben.
Thank you, Ruben.
Do you have any other questions?
Thank you, Patty and Justin. Okay, I think we're going to move on to, I see one hand raised, Pamela Meggs.
Would you like me to unmute her, Mayor?
Yes.
Okay. Pam, you're unmuted.
Good evening. I live at 310 Cypress. I'm speaking as a citizen. I'm not speaking for the Ross Valley Sanitary District. So I think this is the third increase over a short period of time, if I'm not mistaken, which is a lot. You know, times are hard right now. The other thing I wanted to talk about was comparisons. All those cities are in Marin. Nothing went outside to, you know, other counties that are close to Marin. Someone's talking.
Go ahead, Pam. I've muted them.
And so to me, it's not a fair comparison. You're only looking at Marin. When we did comparisons on the Ross Valley, we went outside the county. So I wanted to point that out, that I don't know why that wasn't taken into consideration. The other costs are this hill cost. If you live on a hill, you pay more. I don't quite understand that. I don't know if other communities do that, but it's, it's strange. And I don't know if those breakouts were done in your report. I, I just didn't have time to really look into that. And then, where's my other note here? Is the consultant hired by the town? Or is a consultant hired by Marin Sanitary? Because I was a little lost in that one. And the other thing about the, the digesters at CMSA, I could have heard this wrong today, but I think the digester's down because it ripped. And there's in the process of making a new one. So I'm, I thought I heard, and I'm sorry if I'm not real clear. I think the, those FOG, which is fat, soil and grease, are being shipped out. And I, I don't know about other recyclables, but to another place to take them. So that's all.
I see no other speakers, Anna Mayor?
Oh, I do see one raised hand. That's Mark Bell. You're unmuted now.
Thanks, Michelle. So while I did not see this person's bill, a family member spoke to someone out in Western Marin who has recology. They're paying about $30 a month for a 32-gallon can. The trucks are quieter. The trucks are quieter, they don't show up at before 5 o'clock in the morning. And another issue I have is the last, when you entered into this contract, I asked you to put it out to bid and you refused. And this company, R3, said, well, maybe recology would be cheaper for two or three years. Kind of glossed over the costs in West Marin, which I believe is recology. And so they're still enjoying lower rates than we are in Fairfax with quieter trucks. And they also take aseptics in their recycling. I don't understand it. To Pam's point again, like what is the net increase over the past four or five years? It's got to be over 40%. And I thought that rate increase also was capped. Are we revisiting what the actual cap is? I mean, that's a question that I don't seem to get any answer to as the public. I don't understand why you didn't put this out to bid to see who would give us the best deal? Who would give us the best product? Who would give us the best service? Maybe it is Marin Sanitary. But how do we know? And I'm, you know, there's a lot of talk going on with a lot of terms that we in the general public probably aren't that familiar with. But to me, it just sounds like a lot of fluff to say that, you know, our rates are going up again. We were told in one jump that it was to give the employees raises. And the town council jumped, oh, you know, it's good, you know, we want, you know, people to be able to afford to live here. Well, I talked to someone and they said, what are you talking about? We're in the middle of a, of a contract. We're a union, we don't come up for a contract for another two plus years. I talked to someone else and said, raise? What raise? And this was six or eight months after this raised, after this rate increase went in retroactively. So I think you guys are living in a fantasy. And I see I have 17 seconds left, that's it.
Okay, seeing no more speakers, I'm closing the public hearing and bringing the item back to council for deliberation and vote. Any further comments from the council? Vice Mayor Cutrano?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I actually did have one question I'd be remiss if I didn't ask Patty or the good folks at MSS to speak on this. But over the course of the last year, a number of constituents and residents in Fairfax reached out about the time of day that pickups occur. And it being too early in some neighborhoods and whatnot. And I know that it's, it's not easy to work out the logistics of, of how all that works. But I was wondering if someone could briefly speak on how that, how that works, so that members of the public understand how, how we get to the routes that are created and whether or not there's any possibility for route adjustments or anything like that. But I was wondering if that was possible.
Is there someone that can offer a brief explanation on how the time of day pickups are established?
If I may, say, Mayor, and I, I see that Patty wants to answer, but it is written that way in our franchise agreement. So for whatever that means in terms of relooking at these things, I hear your point and I've heard from many constituents as well.
Patty, do you care to respond to that question?
Thank you, yes, we just got the unmute button. Thank you so much. That's a delicate balance, Jan, trying to not be a hindrance during commute time or when children are being driven to school. And it is a 4 o'clock start time. There are a lot of narrow streets in Fairfax, so we want to make sure that we're out of the way and not in anyone's danger zone as well. But if you have some specific addresses, we can try and alter if folks are being disturbed by our trucks and move them to another, another location and do our very best not to wake anyone up. But on the other end, you know, getting in the way of a busy day is somewhat difficult too. But we can try that, especially a problem in the summer when people sleep with the windows open.
Thank you, Patty.
Sure.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Sorry, this is Justin, just to add. So we, we are authorized at 4:00 AM. We don't send any trucks out until 4:00 AM, so they're leaving the very earliest they're leaving at 4:00. And typically, those are for commercial locations. So we're usually not in front of residents' house that early. Again, being mindful of their sleep patterns. But as Patty mentioned, being able to, to not be in the way. We, we, there have been periods of time when we have tried to do later starts. And we get probably the same amount, if not more complaints when we do that as those complaining about us being there early.
Thank you, Justin. Are there any other comments before? Okay, I would just like to say thank you to Garth. And if you could provide that presentation to our clerk, if you haven't already done so, I'd love to have that loaded onto our website.
Happily, Mayor.
Are we ready to entertain a motion?
Yes, please. Mayor?
Yes.
May I do so?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. So I just want to, with gratitude and appreciation from Marin Sanitary Services and the work that you have done so faithfully for Fairfax and in partnership with Fairfax through the pandemic. I wholeheartedly appreciate that our rate has, with this new index and methodology, has stayed lowest ever historically, except when we had no rate increase. And one year we had a negative rate, we had a decrease. But this year, I'm, I'm very pleased and I would make a motion, and I guess it's a simple motion, to adopt a resolution establishing a maximum rates collected by Marin Sanitary Service for solid waste services to be effective January 1st, 2022 in the town of Fairfax.
I'm happy to second that.
If I may, this is Janet, there's also a franchise agreement amendment.
Oh, right. All right. So, and may I just add then?
And then?
The maximum rates. And it can be made in one motion, Janet?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm going to go back to adopt a resolution establishing maximum rates collected by Marin Sanitary Service for solid waste services to be effective January 1st, 2022, and approving the third amendment to the franchise agreement with Marin Sanitary Service.
Second.
Motion, Goddard, second, Cutrano. Michelle, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Kohler?
Yes.
Councilmember Ackerman? I saw you say yes, but you're muted.
There, yes.
Thank you. And Councilmember Goddard?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cutrano?
Yes.
And Mayor Hellman?
Yes.
All eyes, thank you.
Thank you to our partners who presented this evening. I'm going to propose a five-minute bio break. Can we please reconvene at, let's see, 8:18? Thank you. Okay, I think we're all back. We're proceeding with the regular agenda. Item number five, discussion of safety element progress, including potential changes to the text, policies, programs, and graphics, the development of new wildfire safety programs, recognition of the efforts of Fire Safe Marin, neighborhood response groups and the wild, excuse me, and Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority, and compliance with SB 379 to address climate adaptation and resiliency. Ben, are you on?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
And we have our EMC partners on as well, I understand?
Yes, we do.
Please provide your staff report.
Okay, thank you very much, Madam Mayor. You do have your staff report before you, which lists the areas in which we've been working regarding the safety element and also providing you with some other background information that was requested. I have with me tonight Richard James from EMC Planning, who has taken the lead on working on the safety element to provide his presentation. So with no further comment, I will turn things over to Richard.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. And I will put the show up here. I believe that's it. All right, so, next slide, there we go. Just a brief overview of what we're going to cover tonight. Safety element background, which will include a schedule update. We'll focus on tonight's objectives, what we'd like to get from the council this evening, an overview of the changes we've made to the safety element. What you have in front of you is the red line dating from late October, which was presented to Planning Commission and the Planning Commission's Subcommittee. And then discussion and feedback. So the safety element, as I'm sure you're aware, is mandated by the state. Town of Fairfax, safety element dates back to the last general plan update in 2010. So it's about 10 years old at this point. To my knowledge, there haven't been any previous updates to the safety element in that time. A lot has changed, though, in just 10 years. There's far greater understanding of wildfire behavior. The whole approach to structure hardening has changed in relation to new knowledge on fires, how to, how to make your yard safer from fire and so on. In addition, there's a number of pieces of legislation that Sacramento has passed mandating changes to a safety element, mostly in conjunction with housing element update, which is why we're doing the safety element at this point. Those relate to climate change vulnerability, resiliency to climate change, and then quite applicable to Fairfax, single street, single egress streets and evacuation, because with all the, you know, windy, twisty roads up into the hills. So the safety element update was prepared early on. Like I say, we had a draft in place in late October because we wanted to inform the housing element. We thought it was really important, since we're doing the two together, to do the safety element first and take the, the information we gathered from that and apply that into the housing element. We've had a lot of consultation with stakeholders and various of the town's committees. I won't go through all of those, I think they're in the staff report. November 18th, we were with, at the Planning Commission for their input. November 20th was a workshop, community workshop focused primarily on housing. And that brings us to tonight. And then I will give you a little rundown of what's happening in the near future. We've got a new, another workshop on December 20th, again focused on apartment dwellers and housing element, try to get there. That particular demographics input on housing. But one thing coming up very soon that isn't on the list, I was just informed by Andy, is we have software called Convayio. And that allows you to post a document online, so at Fairfax Speaks, and get public input and comments on it. So we will be putting the safety element up as the first document. And so we'll have additional public participation on the safety element coming up very shortly, I think within the week. Looking a little further out, in the spring, we should come back to the Planning Commission and council with the safety element. Again, the final draft of the safety element at this point is scheduled for August of 2022. There's something important happening late in the year next year, and that is CalFire is updating its fire severity hazard maps. And we're hoping that we can sneak those in before we go to Planning Commission and council for adoption. We don't know the timing, the state doesn't seem to know the timing at this point. But we're hoping to get those in. And then adoption at this point is expected in December 2022. So tonight's objectives, we've got five listed here. And let's say, we really appreciate the line-by-line edits that we have gotten. We've gotten them from several people, and those are fantastic. We'll go through those, but we're not looking for those tonight. What we really want are the bigger picture feedback tonight. Additional factors that we may have missed in the safety element, at this point, we cover, as it has for at least the last 10 years, geologic, fire, flood, and then preparedness. But within those categories, or if there's another category you think should be covered, please let us know, we'd like to have a discussion on that. Top safety element priorities. We asked Planning Commission, could they please send in their biggest concerns, their top priorities for programs? Planning Commissions, one of the big things that came out of Planning Commission really was there's a whole laundry list of programs in our safety element. So many that you tend to lose them in the weeds. And how can we focus on what's most important and really get some good progress towards increasing safety in the town? So if you have any comments on that, that would be much appreciated. There are a lot of community resources out there. We've got neighborhood response groups, pretty active in Fairfax. We've got a Fire Safe Council. How can we get them involved? How can we assign them some responsibilities, assuming they're willing to take it, which I assume they are, because they volunteered, you know, in their groups to, you know, better the safety of the town? How can the information in the safety element inform the housing element update? You know, one piece we've, we've mapped out the single ingress egress streets. So we have a nice map now, it shows which streets have only a single way out. And they mapped how many structures are in each of those streets. So it's a really interesting, informative piece. I think the map still needs a little refining. But it's pretty interesting to look at that in context of housing. And then finally, some big topics, evacuation routes, temporary emergency refuge, and stormwater retention. We've really looked at these as big, critical items. Just to, we'll focus a little more later on those. But any information you've got, or any opinions you can give us, something to focus how we go forward in the next revision of the safety element would be much appreciated. So the red line that you have shows a ton of edits. We reorganized a lot of the safety element. We'll get into that a little more detail, but community preparedness section had subsections on geologic flooding and fire that are individually covered earlier. And we took a lot of that out and redistributed it. We found there were some, you know, near redundant programs. And so we tried to consolidate things and put them in a little more order. Obviously, preparedness touches on all of those, but we tried to refocus that section of the safety element. We've updated some of the maps. Like I said, we'll try to update that CalFire map when we can. Right now, the hazard severity map for Fairfax, because it's local responsibility area, is a draft from 2007. There was no mandate for CalFire to cover anything other than the very high fire hazard areas in the local responsibility area. And there are none of those in Fairfax. So if you look at the final CalFire map blank for Fairfax, which seems kind of useless. So we've, you know, at this point, we've got the draft, which at least gives some demarcation of various levels of fire hazard. We've got a lot of information added from the Marin Multijurisdictional Local Hazards Mitigation Plan. Specifically, we looked at Appendix J in that mitigation plan. Appendix J is specific to Fairfax. So we've got a lot of the information came out of that particular part of the hazards mitigation plan. And like I said, Planning Commission and a number of concerns, just summing them up briefly, emergency ingress and egress. That included things like night evacuation. How readable are the addresses when emergency response comes up the road? What do you do when there's a power outage? And of course flooding. And not flooding just in the creek, but a lot of people mention, you know, large amounts of water coming down streets, for example, where storm drainage in the local streets isn't that good. The overall recommendation we got out of Planning Commission was really focused on the action programs, move this town forward in safety and see what kind of responsibilities can be given to the volunteer groups. All right, so topic by topic. All right, so topic by topic updates, the geologic hazard section, we didn't do too much to, honestly. A few minor program changes. We did some updates on the maps. Flooding a little bit more, we added some programs particularly addressing development in flood zones, need for hydrological studies, obtaining flood certificates along with, you know, the building occupancy, and then flood resistant design criteria for public improvements. The big changes came to a fire hazard. For some of the legislation, we've added a section showing addressing climate change, resiliency, climate change vulnerability. We added some specificity to some of the programs, street dimensions. I think we have 18 feet. I believe that should be 20. So if anyone catches that, we've already caught that. Shaded fuel brakes, the illustration here in the picture shows a shaded fuel brake along a road. The idea being that it reduces your ground fuels, reduces your fire ladder, and reduces basically, it makes it more difficult for the fire to climb up into the canopy. And along a street like this, and you've got a lot of these in Fairfax, you don't want those branches overhanging the road catching fire and interfering with your evacuation. So a program of some sort to increase shaded fuel brakes. New and revised programs, emergency access to hard-to-reach homes. Some of these, you know, when you get up into those narrow roads and little skinny driveways and so on, it's hard to find a house. How to harden your home? There's quite a bit of new information on how fires reach your house. It's not necessarily just a wall of flame. Sometimes it's ember, ember's burning. Sometimes it's radiant heat from an adjacent structure. And then fires, fire escape landscaping. The new guidance on, you know, it used to be just 30 feet clear or 100 feet clear. Now they're getting a lot more fine tuned. There's a five-foot zone immediately around your house. They want completely non-combustible. And how do we achieve that? So issues for discussion, and we've brought this up with Planning Commission specifically, we're temporary emergency refuges. Got the map up of the mutual threat zone map for Cascade. You can see the only refuge provided for that community, and we're estimating maybe 1,000 people in that area, is down at Dog Edgar Park, which is really pretty small. And if you have that number of people, you know, going there as a refuge, you're going to quickly overrun it. And the other problem, of course, is it's pretty far down the road. And we're looking at worst-case scenario. If you're trapped in Upper Cascade, for example, and you can't get out, where do you go? What do you do? And we'd really like to look hard at, how can we make this the safest possible? You know, if you have to harbor up there, how do you do it safely? If you have to get out, how do we make that the most possible? So you don't have, you know, cars parked blocking your way. Imagine a fire truck coming up and a stream of cars going down at the same time. You know, we need to figure out how to best address that to save people's lives. If a, you know, fire burns down in that area and potentially could trap people in the upper part. Vegetation clearance and evacuation routes, like the picture I showed on the last slide. Can you make the vegetation surrounding, especially your key evacuation routes, less prone to burning? Meeting the zero zone for fire clearance, that's that five feet around your house. How do you do that with a bunch of existing houses in tight places? You know, it's hard to achieve, and it obviously takes a lot of cooperation from the citizenry. How do you achieve that in the best manner? The other big piece, stormwater detention. We know that that a stormwater detention facility was considered for Lefty Gomez and rejected. We would like to find out, is anyone interested in revisiting that? Is that a dead topic? You know, we need some guidance on that. And then the town hall culvert has been identified as substandard for decades. And is the town interested in looking at solutions to that? So the community preparedness section, we refocused it quite a bit. We tried to pull all the policies and programs that had to do with getting people information in advance, put them in one place. And then we tried to take all the policies that facilitated citizen emergency response, which is critical because you've got a limited number of firefighters, police. You know, a lot of people are going to be on their own, and how do you facilitate their correct response when there's an emergency? So those were the two big rearrangements in the community preparedness section. And then the evacuation planning and response to disruptions such as your power supply. Pretty much were there, and I think we left those pretty much intact. We did put in some new programs, increasing resilience, better awareness of evacuation, for example, the Zone Haven maps that are contracted by the Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority. Assurance for the mobility challenge and the special needs. We're pretty concerned if you've got somebody who's 80 years old and are way up a road, can they get out? You know, and we've got the neighborhood response groups. How do they play into that? How do we, how do we address that population of people who aren't that able? And then personal safety during evacuations. So again, feedback tonight, we'd really like to look at those big picture items like I've discussed. Any additional factors that should be considered? Top safety element priorities, community resources, and how do we engage them? How do we take best advantage of those that are existing? How information in the safety element could inform the housing element update? In other words, are there safety concerns that should really be thought through and addressed and considered when we look at housing? And where do we put it? And then evacuation routes, the temporary refuges, and stormwater detention issues. Again, welcome any fine-toothed, fine-come level of detail in written response. That'd be great. But we'd really like to focus on the big picture items this evening. That concludes the presentation.
Thank you. Before I ask my colleagues if they have questions. Richard, how many more times, I know this is a draft. How many more times will this safety element be presented before council, before it's considered final?
Okay, the contract actually has two drafts, and my intention is to do the next draft immediately following this hearing because we've now heard from the Subcommittee, we've heard from the full Planning Commission, and we'll hear from your council tonight. And the idea is to get that updated, but keep it as a working draft because we'll also be getting public comments through the Convayio channel, and keep that as a working draft until we decide we've had enough input that we can pretty much solidify it. I think what we'd probably do is come back in the spring with a report on what kind of input we've gotten and what kind of changes we've made without actually updating drafts. And then any further input at that point, we would incorporate into a second published draft.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is you only, I've heard you say twice, you only want big picture items. I would like to support that. I don't know that we are, honestly. So the version two you're talking about, the next in the spring. It doesn't sound like there's going to be another opportunity beyond that to get into the nitty-gritty.
Yeah, well, yeah, like I said, we're always welcome any written, small, fine detailed stuff, for sure. Because I know there are people on the commission, people on the council, who know a lot more about Fairfax and safety issues than I do. So I certainly welcome all that detail.
Sure, okay.
We just, tonight, I think what we want to do is get some kind of big picture direction and what direction to go with. You know, some of these bigger topics like evacuation and clearing vegetation along evacuation routes, including down in the Ross Valley floor, where you've got, you know, certain places, you've got plantable plants right against your major evacuation route to 101. Or one, yeah, 101.
Right.
Mayor Helman, if I could also interject that we do have Ray Moritz in the audience. Michelle, he's under Urban Forestry Associate. So if there are specific questions related to some comments that we included in our staff report, Ray is available to participate in that conversation. I just wanted to point out that resource. We certainly value his input.
Wonderful. Thank you. And I promise I will open this up to the council questions. I just, I wanted to, I'm trying to kind of steer this ship a little bit. So Ben, are you going to provide an overarching housing element update? Or what Mr. James provided, is that what you intended to share? Because I'm looking to share with the public where we are against the project plan. I did see a few items missing in the status update that I recently learned. So do you want to share that, or?
Yeah, yes, thank you for that opportunity. I would announce that the Planning Commission will be discussing the housing element tomorrow night at their regularly scheduled meeting. So I invite everybody to tune in starting at 7:00 PM. We'll be looking at things like housing opportunity sites, a more detailed report out from the November 20th workshop, which I also want to thank everybody who participated in that. And information regarding our public engagement efforts. As noted, we are starting to focus on groups of people, and this pertains to AB 686 and reaching out to assure fair housing opportunities. We are reaching out to individual groups, individuals and groups that may be typically marginalized. So that's part of what we reported with respect to our renter outreach in groups, for example, Spanish-speaking individuals, which will be having a focus group meeting very shortly with that, and also meeting with the largest employer in town, Good Earth, and their employees. So we're pretty excited about that outreach effort. So Planning Commission tomorrow night, please, everybody, listen in on that. I also would like to announce, we've mentioned this, and we've had, I think, close to 50 people who've already participated, but we have a new interactive engagement tool on the Fairfax Speaks website called Plan Fairfax Housing, and what it does is it gives anybody the opportunity to put on their planner hat. We've listed our housing opportunity sites and density ranges for those sites. And we're basically asking the public to give us their opinions about what they think, where they think housing should go at these various sites. And in point of fact, so that's just a straight kind of numerical, help us figure out where to put 490 housing units, the regional housing needs allocation that we've received from the state. And in addition, on the Fairfax Speaks website, we also are providing opportunities for people to comment on individual housing sites. So it's not just a numbers thing. We want to know what people know about those sites and any other comments they may have. So we're really starting to get some great results. I don't want to sidetrack the conversation at this meeting, but, you know, into the hundreds of responses and separate individuals who've logged on and participated in these efforts. And the more public input we get, the better, whether it's at a meeting like this or at their convenience by logging onto the website. We do have the workshop completely posted, and we got some really great public feedback in terms of how useful that was in raising the public's awareness and knowledge of what's going on with the housing element and safety element update. So I would encourage anybody who's kind of going, what is all this housing element stuff? To take the time to go to the Fairfax Speaks website and click on the link for the workshop. It's easy to find. And then you can just divide it up as you determine is most convenient for you and learn as much information as you want. But really, the opportunity is out there, and that was, gosh, I'm going to guess, four-hour workshop with an hour of public questions where we basically just responded to whatever questions the public came at us with. So those are all opportunities that are available now and also reflect the work that we've been doing.
Thank you. Okay, council members. What questions do you have? Because I know you have questions.
Can I just ask, can they take the screen share down? Because we can take that down. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you. Thank you so much, Richard and Ben as well. I'm just, I have, I sent some comments and some questions, and I have tons of them. So I want to rein myself in, and I want to just throw you an example of something that I want to know from you guys. If this is the level of specificity you want or not. So let's talk about alerts and notifications. Things like how we use the flood sirens, which also could be leveraged in other particular disasters, but there's no clarity there. Is that something that you want our input on? Or something like, we now have one of our police vehicles that's outfitted with a high-low siren. So it's a different way of looking at how we alert. What level do you want us to come at this with? Same with things like, we have a community preparedness, emergency preparedness committee, which is going to be stood up. Do we want that instead of saying things like a fire safe council, which actually doesn't exist in Fairfax? How much do you want from us? And is it better for me to just write some of that, or just so that we don't go on and on?
I would say that the flood siren issue is kind of a discussion item because they're technically flood sirens. But then, when you look at Ross Gully Fire Department's website on flood sirens, it says, but they might be used for other purposes. Well, maybe we need to re-characterize that in safety element. You know, program somehow designed to say, the sirens are emergency sirens, not necessarily flood sirens. You can be pretty certain if they go off in July, it's not a flood.
Well, all due respect, though, I think there, it's very complicated, and I wouldn't take that on myself as a civilian. I think fire and police have, this is an age-old conversation, but I think clarification is really, really necessary. So my question really for you is, do we address that in this conversation? Or do we just put that out that that needs to be looked into?
I'd like to see the council, and first I will preface this by saying that several council members have raised the siren in emergency notification issue. So I consider that very much on the table for further evaluation and conversations. This is also an outreach item with the emergency responders. I would like to get comments from your council, whether you want us to explore its functionality for fire response. I mean, I've heard sirens, other than the flood, which is pretty obvious, but I've heard it kind of like, it's a dog barking where it's telling you something's up, but you don't know what it is. So the idea is, if there are ways that we should be exploring its functionality, whether it's the high-low or things like that, please provide us additional direction on that, and we will be doing those type of discussions with the emergency providers.
And I believe, Ben, somebody at Planning Commission said that San Francisco's sirens also have a voice component.
Right. And, but things like this, Richard, again, all due respect, I know these are things that come up at Fire Board, and there's cost related to that, and it's complex in our canyons with our, you know, topography. And so I would just say, if this is what you're looking for, that my input would be, let's put that down as something we absolutely need to flesh out in terms of clarifying for the public how to use our siren system.
Yes, and following up on your second question regarding community preparedness committees. And there's, again, been already been comments about the appropriate use of FireWise Neighborhood Groups, NRGs, which Neighborhood Response Groups, CERTs. So we've taken those comments, and we recognize some of that are corrections. We've had other comments by commissioners that are very specific about that. We were blessed with people who've been very active in these efforts. And of course, Fairfax is a leader in FireWise Neighborhoods. So things that you believe those groups can and should be involved in based on your intimate knowledge and participation with those efforts. Some of you serve on those committees with, for example, the Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority. So we definitely want to get its opportunity, tune up where we see that involvement. As Richard noted, one of the takeaways that people are realizing is just As Richard noted, one of the takeaways that people are realizing is just, you know, we've got, what, two people in the fire station right now? And those type of really limited availability of emergency responders under certain fire scenarios. So to the extent that the town works on its community preparedness and resilient strategies, and that US leaders can provide us with direction, that's super.
So I think maybe the dividing line is, if it's a factual correction or a nomenclature comment or some, you know, clarifying addition that you're proposing, that's fine, just send it in writing. If it's something that, you know, would warrant some discussion, I think, bring it up by all means.
Yeah, I would, I, I would agree. Renee, just use your best judgment. But I don't, I don't think we should be raising grammatical, you know, spacing issues and word choices. You can document that in an email. Do you have any other que- questions? I'm sure you do.
Um, I, I do, but they're, but they're comments, so I'm going to wait.
Okay.
But just because didn't, do you want us to stick to questions, right?
Yes. Vice Mayor Cutrone?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I had a couple of grammatical and spate, no, I'm just kidding. I, I had a more general, like, big picture questions about, one was about thinking about the way that this speaks to the housing element. And we're, you know, we just were talking about SB9, lot splits, things like that. I, and now looking at this document, thinking about flooding and obviously the rain outside our doors right now. But, you know, I was wondering, do we in Fairfax have like streamside conservation area ordinances or setbacks that would prevent the sort of lot splitting or the ADUs that are right up against or right in flood prone areas? I just, it was something that I wanted to call out. I don't know what the history of that is here. But I've toured a couple homes where people have built second things and they're right up on those streams. And I know this is a county, a discussion that's happening at the county about unincorporated areas. But something I wanted to flag. And then the other sort of big picture thing was, I didn't see anything in here about like cell service, which has been an issue that has come up time and time again. And so something I'd hope that y'all would look into and happy to add more comments. But that was just more of a bigger picture topic. Didn't know if you had looked into that yet. And then I, I also just wanted to plug, I'm curious from, from Bruce, being on the flood zone group, if there had been or have been recent, any recent discussions about the Lefty Gomez thing? I wanted to defer to you on anything related to flood zone stuff since you're our, you're our rep. Thanks.
I could respond to the, the first question from Councilmember Cutrone regarding stream setbacks. Please keep your eyes open. We're going to be coming back with modifications to our ADU, JADU ordinance. It currently contains stream setback requirements. And we are in discussions to see to what extent those remain. Obviously, the 100-year flood plain boundary would be sacrosanct. But that's, that's very much an issue that is in play with regard to those regulations. Concerning SB9, your council is well aware that the town has applied minimum egress standards to our adoption of that code. And specifically the 20-foot road width, we are in the process of mapping our streets. Suffice to say, we are well aware already that many of our hillside roads do not meet that standard. And I would also point out that the Planning Commission, prior to the passage of SB9, was already considering those type of safety related considerations in looking at what we refer to as missing middle housing, which is duplexes to save fourplexes. And was directing staff to pursue discussions of applying those in areas closer to the downtown and in the flatland areas. So we already are kind of working along those strategies relating to evacuation, adequate street access, and where it's most appropriate. And the council, of course, has already adopted an ordinance that I think goes a long way to addressing safety concerns for future lot splits and subsequent development of duplexes on those lines.
And any, any?
I, in terms of cell service, that is a very good question. And I think that's one that I would be very happy to get the entire council's discussion on. I think it's pretty well known that there are areas of the town, particularly up Cascade Canyon, where there's very limited cell service. And I know this town is not excited about electromagnetic radiation, probably for good reason. But, you know, there are also trade offs, and we know that there's dead zones for cell service. And that in some instances, I believe that the sirens, you simply don't hear them because of acoustics and topography. So, you know, the question is, is that worthy of pursuit to consider things like, oh, gosh, what do they call those? Things that look like trees, for example. It is specifically cited to make sure that we have more inclusive cell coverage. That's a question to your council. So thank you for bringing that up.
Councilmember Kohler?
Yeah, I have one logistics question and then a question to add on about the cell service. So just logistically, Richard, I heard you say that when we see this document again, we won't see a red line. And I guess I'm requesting that we do when we see it again, because I don't want to go through this. I provided very detailed stuff, as I know others did. I don't want to have to go through that again. So sometimes when you have things like that, you sort of miss the forest for the trees. So I, I do kind of, I'm putting a question out there. Can we see a red line that incorporates what changes you've made the next time we see this? And then my second question, which is really sort of piggybacking on Vice Mayor Fuchano's, is dealing with really exploring cell service. So we, Chancellor's kind of across the street from me. This whole area out west, Sir Francis Drake, has no cell service. And if you hook into Wi-Fi, you can have cell service. But if the power goes out, you're dead. So there will be no cell service, there will be nothing out in this area. And I would just encourage you guys to try to look at the maps of the different cell providers that will show you where dead zones are. And I think that would be something to add to the safety element. But the other piece of that is, and this might be part of where you go into looking at cell service. And the sirens, we can't hear the sirens out here, so they would be useless for out here as well. But just maps of where dead zones are. I don't see cell service changing much in Fairfax for a variety of reasons. But the other piece of it is when, in October 2019, when we had four days of cell service and everything, power outage is through PSS. There was nothing for all of Marin County and some other counties. All cell towers went down. So I would question you, if you've looked at Senator McGuire sponsored a bill that I believe got signed into law that required more backup on cell towers. Because I think it was four counties were down for a number of days. So just, I'm just raising those questions. I have a few comments when we get to that section. But I just think that was a really important factor to think about when we think about safety. Thank you.
Mayor, just one more quick question.
Sure.
Um, Richard, you, you were talking about the update, CAL fires, fire severity maps. Is there a chance, or what are, what are the chances that we could end up having parts of Fairfax make it into the very high category?
Boy, I don't have any idea on that. The, the thing that I find interesting is you have neighborhoods like Coffee Park, which certainly were not a high fire hazard zone. They burned to the ground. So my, my approach on this safety element is entire town is at high risk of fire hazard. Fire, depending on the weather, depending where the fire starts, how it moves. I, Fairfax could be considered very high fire danger under certain circumstances. And I'm not sure I put a lot of emphasis on whether the map is colored red or orange. You know, I think we should treat the entire town, including the valley floor, as susceptible to a wildfire.
I, I guess I'm only asking because of housing mandates in the Wui. And I understood, and I don't want to lead us off track, but I did understand that being designated very high, which we are not, allowed us to have a little bit more local control, if you will, about building in the Wui. Or SB9's mandates in the Wui. I, I don't know, but that's my understanding. So that's why I'm curious.
Yeah, for some reason, there's a lot of additional concern attached when they put the V in front of your high fire hazard. You say, I'm not convinced, I live in an area that's, it's described as moderate, and I'm very concerned about a wildfire hitting my house. So I'm taking lots of steps.
Yeah, Mr. Moritz, who's in the audience, I believe has some detailed knowledge about what factors go into the fire hazard severity zones. And I'm not sure, I mean, one of the things that I've always thought, it's patently obvious that evacuation difficulty needs to be an integral part of discussions married to fire risk and housing allocations. And as your council is aware, made that point quite unsuccessfully to the Association of Area Governments, governments in our appeal of their housing numbers. But, you know, it just seems to follow. So in any event, Ray might be able to shed more light if, if there's a desire to, to that line of questioning.
Councilmember Ackerman, do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions. I heard questions that, that I could respond to, but I'll wait until afterwards, after public comment.
Okay. I have several questions that I didn't get responses to. So I'm, I'm sorry that I have to use the public's time to do this, but I'm going to go through them now. And some of them are, you know, administrative in, in nature, just really want to understand what I see this document as being a very, potentially very useful tool or plan. So on page four, I note that there's a comment, I guess there's a page four of the staff report, there's a comment that there's programs that have not been implemented in the past 10 years. And so my question is around, you know, tracking and resources to deliver on some of these items. So can you help me understand for, from a project management standpoint? Or what kind of software do you have in place to ensure accountability is, is happening for, you know, the rules and responsibilities that are noted in, in the responsibility section?
Yes, and this, this is an important topic. And I apologize for not responding to your comments. But the way it works is typically agencies that are in charge of looking, implementing these programs have what they call long range planning or advanced planning staffs, which Fairfax, we're pretty much doing current planning most of the time. That's one of the reasons why we hire consultants to help us with these major efforts, long range planning efforts. When I first came to the town a little over four years ago now, I sat down with the Planning Commission. We did a workshop. We went through the general plan stem to stern, determined there are over 300 programs for which planning was assigned responsibility. And given that, we said, well, clearly this is a need to prioritize. We came up with 20 or so programs, took it to your council. And the feedback was, okay, that's swell. Thank you very much. And, you know, when we're, when we need to provide direction on your priorities, we will do so. So it's a challenge, both from this aspect of there's really too many programs to have a reasonable chance to implement. Plus, I think a lot of assignments, that was another comment that your council had already provided is, hey, a lot of these things say planning, but it seems like it would go to fire, which is probably correct and something that we should explore. But the other aspect is, and the Planning Commission got back to this when they reviewed the safety element, where they simply said, we need to prioritize these programs. It's, it's all well and good to have these laundry lists, these wish lists. But unless we have some way to say, hey, this is what we as a community determined to be our highest priorities and start creating metrics and action programs to deliver those, it's, it's really, it kind of gets lost in the wash. So that's a long-winded way of saying, we haven't really been tracking them. We've done so with this effort. As I said, I, I did that four years ago with over 300 of them. And I think the conclusion is the same, that we as a town or staff in the commission believes that we should be prioritizing and working off our highest priorities. What we do with the other, you know, several hundred, I'm not sure yet, but most of those aren't in the safety element and housing element.
Okay, thank you. That's really helpful. So post-delivery of the final housing element plan, do you have a software system to track and manage? Or how is that, how is that managed from there after EMC is gone?
We would, with your council's direction, we would set up a matrix that would list if your council so directed the highest priority programs with some kind of tracking timeline and turnarounds where we would be obligated or in charged with coming back to the commission and your council with periodic updates. I would assume, you know, one of the things we're all learning is that fire safety is just such a massive concern for so many communities, including and maybe particularly Fairfax, that I would assume that as we get into the nuts and bolts of implementing programs, that those would be something that wouldn't just go sit on a shelf somewhere.
Okay. Thank you. I'll save my other comments till after the public gets to us. The only other thing I would like to add is related to the evacuation protocol of the Fairfax PD. I didn't see that noted or referenced, and it's three years old. So that might be an opportunity to integrate. Or I, I think, I think I would recommend that. Did I?
I, I defer to Richard, but I will say also that evacuation is something that we're learning more about all the time and that we have Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority with a crackerjack researcher working on four jurisdictions in Marin, and Fairfax is one of them. Thank you very much, Mr. Weber. And we will have those results, probably not in time for this effort. But certainly implementing programs could feed into those results. So evacuation is very much on our minds. And with your council's direction and focus, we will continue to explore specific aspects of that.
Okay, thank you, Ben. If there's no other questions, I'm happy to open it up to public comment. Okay, I'm opening the public comment for this agenda item. Members of the public wishing to speak on this. And please raise your hand in the Zoom now or press star nine if you're calling in.
I see one raised hand, and that is Frank Egger. You're unmuted now. You might have to unmute yourself. You might have to unmute yourself.
Go ahead.
Great. Thank you, Michelle. Frank Egger Mettaway, speaking for Save Fairfax and Fairfax Tomorrow. The public has had three days to prepare for this meeting. You know, I read the 78-page staff report. And what's missing from Fairfax's planning consultants, EMC, and the staff is institutional knowledge of what former councils have authorized, studies approved, and planning updates with various elements adopted. Page 25 recommends mapping of historical and recent landslides. Recommends paying a geotech firm to prepare mapping. The issue is Fairfax has all of that data already mapped. There is no need to start over. In 1973, we hired the planning and land use firm Wallace McCard Robertson to prepare a general plan update and open space element. Also, in 1972, because of significant historic landslides that closed roadways and destroyed many Fairfax homes, Fairfax went to the state and asked for assistance. The State Division of Mines and Geology, at the request of Fairfax, sent Ted Smith, a state geologist, to live in Fairfax for over a year to walk every road and street in town and map all of the actual and potential landslides. WMRT was preparing Fairfax's general plan update and open space element. And Ted Smith provided WMRT with his one-year-plus of work, the mapping and field notes that he had already prepared. WMRT used that mapping and data to prepare eight or so 1974 general plan update maps. It was actually a reconnaissance that the State Division of Mines and Geology did right here in Fairfax. When I left the town council in December of 2005, all of these maps and my laws were rolled up into town safe. To my knowledge, they're somewhere at Town Hall. The wall property had major landslides that blew through homes on Miranda, Miranda Court, San Gabriel, San Gabriel Court. All of those landslides were actually mapped. So ask your staff for copies of the 1974 landslide abundance map. There's no need to reinvent the wheel. It seems the 78-page report glosses over the landslides that are known on the wall property. And since that is a very controversial development application, it's coming for the council, the council needs to see, needs to know all the information. Councilor Katrono asked about a creek setback. Fairfax has a creek setback law. It's 20 feet from the top of the bank or twice the depth of the creek bank. So if the bank is 20 feet deep, then the setback is 40 feet from the top of the back bank for a structure. The Cascades are indeed identified as one of the worst fire hazards in Marin County. We know that. I, the plan, the plan mentions Sherman Avenue culvert, and that is the creek bypass that was constructed in 1931. In 1980, preliminary Fairfax general plan prepared for the city of Fairfax, the city at that time, 58, in 1958, it was 58, it was prepared, recognized the Sherman bypass had limited capacity to handle floodwaters, and that resulted in downtown flooding. So we've, town has known that since 1958, but there was never funding available to enlarge that, that culvert that goes under Baines Road. Page four, the staff report states that town previously debated and ultimately rejected detention basin at Lefty Gomez Field. It was more than debated. The town reacted to, or in response to, and an initiative. An initiative was put on the ballot that said, no, 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 no detention basin at Lefty Gomez Field unless it was on the ballot. Fairfax dropped Lefty Gomez Field as a detention basin. Now, the discussion about, you know, bringing it back, I think there's an issue with the initiative, and it might have to go on the ballot if Fairfax wants to put it, you know, a detention basin there. Anyway, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak tonight, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Frank.
Madam Mayor, I don't see any other raised hands. Oh, yes, I do. It is Mark Bell. You're unmuted now.
Thanks, Michelle. I was waiting for those birds. As I mentioned previously, I have a friend. His house and property burned. Fire traveled 25 miles in about six hours. I was informed that he should have cleaned his gutters. So I sent him an email and I said, oh, you should have cleaned your gutters. He said, well, I had already taken the gutters off of my house, and I had 200 feet of defensible space. So my question is, like, when you go to places like A-BAG or whatever, who want to add in unconscionable amount of cars to the grid of Fairfax, which can't handle a fender bender, you're basically signing a death warrant. And so when you go to these places and they say, well, we're dismissing your claim, did you ask for names? Because these people are committing murder or maybe manslaughter, like PG&E, since they only killed, what, 170-something people in the Paradise Fire. It's murder. And they know it's murder, and they're taking the money. And so you should get names so that whoever survives can go after them. So all this stuff, it's all very, it's all very cute. Now you're talking about cell phones, and then you're going to, you what, override the council vote about, you know, 4G, 5G cell towers in town? I thought this is supposed to be some type of progressive council. You're going to go back and like, you know, put in this detention basin for water when the people said they didn't want it, or you're going to put it in anyway? I thought this is supposed to be a council representative of the people who live here. I mean, we already know it isn't. It's pretty obvious from some of your past actions. But like I just said the last time I spoke, I don't know where you guys live. It sure isn't the real world. You can look at the wall property, and then you can look at Buck Center for Research on Aging, and they had also had major geological problems. And all the foundations on all the houses that you see on the ridge below there all cracked. But they had enough power to get a gag order so that you didn't hear about it. And that's what's going to happen to the people who live below the wall property if you allow them to put a development up there. All those houses are going to be destroyed. That's it.
I see no more raised hands, Madam Mayor.
Okay, I'm closing the public comment and bringing the item back to council for further discussion and vote. Councilmember Goddard.
I mean, a question, as Mr. Egger was referring to the landslide maps and, and I wondered, could you somehow sort of encapsulate the work that's been done on the maps and converting the old paper maps into, into the maps we have digitalized today? And where they exist? And maybe help to either clarify or address some of the confusion around maps? Because I know all the work's been done on maps.
Yes, thank you for your knowledge of that. Mr. Egger is correct in that that town had some really good maps for the time done, not only for Fairfax, but the Ross Valley in general. And what we've had in the last close to 50 years is the benefit, if you want to call it that, of knowledge about other unstable areas in town. And what we have done in our updating of the hazard maps, the location, which I'll get to in a moment, is integrate that 1973 baseline information, which classified for risks zones, and supplement that with information about areas that we've known landslides have occurred in the interim. And so we now have on Marin map, a specific hazards map for Fairfax that has been customized to reflect the land stability classifications for Fairfax. And not surprisingly, many of the hillside areas are classified as higher hazard. But it reflects not just somebody kind of evaluating it based on, you know, their knowledge of things like slumps and other unstable landforms, but actual geologic investigations and soils reports of specific sites where we know, hey, gee, we've got a really unstable soil, maybe a perched water cable. So we've got new information on that topic and have integrated that into a digitized map, which we can apply, anybody can apply, towards individual parcels.
And we've done the same with fire, correct?
Yes, we do have the fire, even though, as noted, there's a lot of work in progress about fire, whether it's a WUW zone or fire hazard severity zones. There's three or four different maps that can be applied relating to fire hazards.
Okay, and people can see these maps?
Fire hazards severity maps are, we've previously put those up in conversations. Off the top of my head, I'm not positive we have that listed in Marin maps. I, excuse me, I believe Marin maps does have WUW maps shown as a layer in their geographic information system program. So the WUW.
Can I add, Ben? So I sit on Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority, and we have a space on Marin maps where they have compiled those maps of where high, very high fire severity is, where high is. So if you look on Marin maps for the Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority, we haven't created them, but they're compiled there. And it may be, and I'm sorry to interrupt you, Ben, it may be that there's also a place for Fairfax, but I know they're all there so you can check there. But it's not the easiest system to use, but you can find them.
Yes, and we also show some version of that on the fire, the safety element, excuse me. And I would say that those maps currently are taken from the prior safety element. And we know that we have a ways to go to make those maps more user friendly, for example, to apply those to individual parcels. And we'll have better graphics and an ability, at least in an online context, to relate those to individual parcels, you know, street addresses and streets and things like that.
So just so I'm clear, per some of the commentary on the maps, I have a hard time determining the streets and so forth on these maps. And the landslides we understood took place in the 70s in the Miranda, Miranda neighborhood. Are they, is that neighborhood shaded as high risk for landslide? I can't tell on this map.
I believe a majority of the wall property where it's in the steeply sloped area is in the high risk landslide or high landslide risk zones. Off the top of my head, even though I would expect it would be, I can't say for certainty with the houses that are at the bottom of those slopes, I'd have to look at that map.
Okay. Thank you. Renee, did you have anything else before I?
I have comments, but I'll wait, because my colleagues have their hands up first.
Okay, Vice Vice Mayor Katrono.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I just had, again, I'll submit more stuff in writing that's more detailed, but just at a higher level, I thought there were opportunities to sort of circle back to my colleague, Councilmember Goddard's point about our new and upcoming emergency preparedness committee. You know, we're sort of pooling a lot of these different groups, but I think the intention of council establishing that committee was to have a committee with a charge to really grapple with some of the strategies and programs that were identified in the safety element. And so just wanted to plug that again as like a group to drop in to certain areas and happy to, I'm sure Councilmember Goddard made the appropriate suggestions of where those should go, but I'll follow up on that, too. I thought there were some areas where like the volunteers were removed, and I think maybe they could, you know, keep, please keep the Fairfax volunteers in mind, especially when we're talking about recovery and other things. They are mentioned during the trail section. And I was hoping that we would be able to incorporate maybe a map or even a link to that Marin maps of the steps, lanes, and paths that we have here in Marin, since we do identify it obviously as a worst case scenario. But nonetheless, it is a resource that we invest time and money into protecting, and those are public commons that need to be protected. The other thing I just wanted to flag, I definitely want to like plus one Councilmember Kohler's suggestion about getting maps of cell service. I totally respect and understand the concerns about EMF. And at the same time, during, you know, previous events, there are people at my apartment complex that are on a fixed income, that are, you know, stuck in their apartments, and they reach out to me stressed out about not having any access to the outside world because there are no, there's no cell service, and so if the internet's cut, they're stuck. So we're really talking about like life and death stuff. And I think it's, even if we want to get the maps to understand what the situation is, I think it'd be prudent to figure out, maybe that's how we talk to utilities about fiber optic for particular areas or how to prioritize something like that. But just, I think we just need to get more creative about what's possible. I don't know if they're like emergency cell boosters or, I don't know. But I am concerned, and I know that the public reaches out to us about it after every severe event and kind of holds that over our heads here. The other thing I just wanted to mention is, I think Councilmember Kohler brought it up briefly, and I know, I don't think I read about it in the safety element, but, you know, future PSPS events, we were, we, for a long period of time, we really didn't have anything going on, any good outreach or game plan with the community around that. And I wonder if there's a ability, even if there's a program or a strategy to put in there, like something specifically that that mentions that as a community safety thing, because that's another issue for our, you know, people aging in place and that don't have a lot of connections to larger community. So just some things I wanted to flag is, again, that larger umbrella.
Yes, thank you for those comments. In terms of cell service, Fairfax has been pretty clear on the topic of 5G, which, by the way, isn't some stealth tower that is well away from residential, but is, as we know, is something that's right down in on Sir Francis Drake. So there may be some way to bifurcate the need for emergency cell service versus blanking into the town in electromagnetic radiation. I'm certainly worthy of consideration with your council's directive. In terms of the community preparedness group, I absolutely agree that that group is tailor-made for many of the programs that we're considering, especially community preparedness in those topics. And I look forward to working with that group to further a myriad of programs that will be of interest to the community or emerge from this conversation and with your council's direction and leadership on that. So I think that's a great chance to kind of marry the various levels of community preparedness, whether it's the fire rate, fire wise, fire safe Marin, you know, this Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority, which is a regional leader in, you know, state-of-the-art fire preparedness and response thing. So there's a lot of opportunities there, and I think that that group can be very instrumental in bringing Fairfax into that whole discussion and programs to enhance our public safety.
Councilmember Kohler?
Yeah, so I'm going to go as quickly as possible over some of the High Points comments. So one of the things I noticed in your documents throughout, you talk about people with mobility issues. And I think one of the areas I would suggest to you to reach out to fire and police is to see, these are confidential lists, but they should have lists of people with access and functional needs. And access and functional needs is defined much broader than just people with mobility issues. It's families with children under the age of 18, older adults, 60-plus, residents with chronic conditions or injuries, and that may be what they're focusing on, low-income households, residents dependent on public transportation, so those guys would have a hard time getting out, residents with limited English proficiency, and residents with physical, developmental and intellectual disabilities. And that may be another area that they're focusing on for their list. In my discussions, when I convened the Citizens Disaster Council a couple of times as mayor, we were kind of assured that they did have lists of folks that they really needed to worry about. And I would suggest to you guys, as part of the safety element, that you find out a little bit more about what the construct is of those folks. And it may not just be people that have dependency on certain medical devices or have mobility issues, it may be broader than that. The other piece I wanted to point out is the Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority is split up into zones, and we are in what's called the Central Marin Zone. It's much broader than just the Upper Ross Valley. It also includes Lower Ross Valley. And so there's actually, and I know you all have spoken to Mark Brown, our executive officer, so it's not Jason Weber, it's Mark Brown, who's our executive officer, but I would just say this, there is one study that there's been quite a bit of money diverted to look at for all of Central Marin shaded field breaks. And then we would try to implement them where we can possible, and that will be helpful. So that's another piece that maybe you can look into a little bit more on that work plan. And also, the overall evacuation study is, again, it's not Ross Valley, it's all of the jurisdictions in Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority. My feeling is it won't be completed by the time we need it. There's a, we have to do a risk assessment, there's quite a bit of work that needs to be done. So, but again, following up a little bit with Mark Brown on those issues, to the extent that you can flesh them out a little bit in the safety element, I think that will be helpful. Another comment, just going a little into the details, but just something that I think we need to think about is the temporary refuge areas. I noticed that you mentioned that Urban Forestry, who is the best, has suggested that for the Cascades area, you might want to have a temporary refuge in Elliott Nature Preserve. And in my discussions with fire and police, particularly fire, that area's going to burn. So I think I would just suggest to you to follow up with Ross Valley Fire, either Chief Weber or Sergeant Dan Mahoney, who's been the lead on the emergency response issues for us, might be one to really check in on that, because we know that people are going to have a hard time getting out of the Cascades, but we don't want them to stop somewhere that potentially could be even worse. So I would just check on that. And then we did talk about, I think I have raised this issue, and Frank Edgar just raised it, the Lefty Gomez Detention Basin was, in my opinion, it's dead. And the money's been redirected from Flood Zone 9 to other purposes, such as Sunnyside Detention Basin. So I think rather than talking about revisiting it at this time, you may want to talk about why it had some merit and how it, because Sunnyside will not get you through a 100-year flood. But I think, and Bruce can speak to this, I think Lefty Gomez was anticipated, it could at least get you through a 50-year flood. So I don't think we should spend a lot of time talking about things that have kind of passed us by, but maybe talk about, you know, why that would have been a good idea, and that we need to look to other options, and probably talking to Bruce Ackerman a little bit more about what Flood Zone 9 has been talking about. But I think now we're all at the point where we know we're not going to beat a 100-year flood, and we're not going to beat a 50-year flood. Another thing I think we need to talk about is the town, as far as post-disaster, and you've got areas discussing that, we pay annually for a group called Agility Insurance Recovery. And in the event of a disaster, they bring in trailers with equipment, computers and such, to get our town hall up and running within a couple of days. And so that's not going to fix the whole town, but it will help us, to the extent that we're completely out, it will help us get up and running very quickly, so we can do a lot of direction from town hall. So to me, I think that's important to add to the safety element. And then, let's see, there's one thing that, I've raised this to you already, and I have a lot of details I've already raised, I'm not going to cover those, but there was one part where you discussed the idea of Sir Francis Drake is a parking lot potentially going west. And fire guys that I have talked to, Todd Lando, who is Fire Safe Marin, as well as Central Marin Fire now, and Michael St. John, who runs Search and Rescue, and Jason Weber, our chief, our fire chief, has said, "In no event should people go west unless an emergency responder tells you you have to go there." So you will be trapped. And so I want to make sure that we make that a real caution. And the other thing, I may disagree a little bit with Councilmember or Vice Mayor Cotrona, the pedestrian trails, most fire guys, they don't use those trails. People in paradise who got out of their cars die. And most say, stay in your car even if there's fire around you. We have said, very, very worst case scenario, and that's why we're doing the pedestrian trails for recreation, but also worst case scenario, there's no way to get out, that's your only way, you don't have a car, nobody's at home, but you're going to attract embers, and you're probably going to burn. So I just want you to add those cautions. And I'm not sure, Chance, that I would actually have a link. Those steps, lanes and paths in Mill Valley are actually incredibly well-done, and they spent over a million on them. Ours are a lot more rudimentary, so I don't think that having a map to them is the greatest idea, and we're still trying to open more of them, but a lot of them are not that great. So I would just say with a measure of caution. But I want to thank you for all your efforts, and thank you for listening, and sorry for taking so much time. Thanks.
Oh, thank you, thank you very much. Renee, I see your hand, but you've spoken a few times. Ackerman, Councilmember Ackerman, do you have any comments?
Yes, thank you. One comment is, well, just going in reverse order, I appreciate what Councilmember Kohler just mentioned about the steps and trails. They are a fantastic thing for recreation, and I think for connectivity in the community, and for people getting some exercise, and for people being able to get around their neighborhood. But they're a last resort in terms of in a fire, because basically you have, as I understand it, the main issue is the radiation, the radiant heat from the fire is just more intense than any of us civilians can imagine. And so it's not a good thing to be out unprotected. But the more, more importantly, I guess, I think the cell, the discussion that Chance brought up, Councilmember Cotrona brought up, and thank you for bringing that up, regarding the danger of us having such poor cell coverage, I do have a few comments on that. One is that actually, we have had better cell coverage than we have now. At my house, which is on the, on Frostock, off of Frostock near Bolina, so it's sort of at the base of the Cascades, we used to have pretty good cell coverage here. And all of a sudden, it tanked. This was some years back, several, maybe six, seven years back, I don't know exactly when. Everybody in the neighborhood noticed it, we were all talking with each other about it, what happened? All of a sudden, we went from having four bars out of five to having one bar that comes and goes. And it's never changed, it's never gotten any better. So there are things that happen with regard to cell coverage that are not just about the topology, there are other things, it's kind of mysterious. It is a real safety issue, and it's something that probably concerns me more than anything else that we can actually do anything about as far as safety in the town, is the fact that there are so many people, especially up Cascade, but also out where Chance and Barbara live, and other places where there's just really poor cell coverage. The town is very clear, I'm in total agreement that we have no need for 5G in the town, and that really wouldn't solve the problem anyway, because that would be a lot of little antennas that would probably lose power when you needed them the most. But what we're talking about is the older kind of cell technology, where the tower is a long distance away from people, but it covers an area. A couple of things that should be understood about that with regard to radiation. For one thing, there are people, there are thousands of people who have cell repeaters in their houses, and of course, almost everybody has 5G in their house. But there are cell repeaters, and the cell companies will give them away, I believe, at least years ago, they would give them away for free, and they told me, AT&amp;T told me, they had given 5,000 of them away. So people have these things in their house, they don't do any good for someone who's walking down the street, because you have to be signed in on the repeater. But people have these personal repeaters in their houses, so if we're thinking that we're avoiding the cell radiation by not having cell towers, it might actually be working the opposite way. And then another way that it can actually work the opposite way is that your phone will crank its cell amplifier up to maximum, because it's such a long distance from a signal, and that's actually where you're getting the radiation, is the thing that you're holding in your hand. So it's, I just think that it's important for us as a town to really sort of get some of these ideas about how the physics really works, and balance them with the very clear danger of the fact that there are so many people who are just really out of communication pretty often in a storm, or in a fire, or many other situations. So I think I'll leave it at that. One other comment is that the, I was glad to see that the pavilion was called out as a gathering place, and glad to see that as sort of an official designation. And one thing that we have been working on, and I think we're pretty close to being able to make some motion on it, there was a problem with the equipment not being available for quite a while, but it's looking like it's available now, is to install equipment in the pavilion that would continue to power, to have battery backup, and possibly even electric vehicle battery, that could be an additional battery backup, so that the pavilion would be able to be powered during a power outage, during a PSPS or other power outage. So that would be an improvement to the pavilion's standing as a gathering place, and also be just a charging station and a gathering place during a PSPS. So that is, I think that's all the comments I have, thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Goddard?
Thank you. So these are my comments, high-level comments. One, actually, Bruce, I'm going to piggyback on that, because I wanted to actually ask, and I wrote down, to check and make sure that the pavilion is actually our official refuge. I had always heard that it wasn't, and I had always heard that we didn't have an official one, because every disaster is going to necessitate us going to a particular designated area based on what's going on. The pavilion's surrounded by trees, it's a wooden structure, so, you know, of course, we wouldn't go there in a fire, but I wanted to check on that. So in the safety element, I think we should address cooling centers. Are we going to look at, where are the places that we can offer people to take refuge in situations beyond a fire situation? I think I would want to make sure to reiterate that we need to prioritize effective use of sirens, looking at upgrading. I know the costs are extraordinary for some of the voiceover, I know that Jason Weber has looked into that, but we would be remiss not to put sirens and notifications in the safety element. I also wanted to call up the wooi, and the designation of the wooi, which is our local responsibility area. And I think in the next year or two, we're up for looking and reapproving our fire code, which is an opportunity to look at the wooi designation. There are places, including San Rafael, that are looking at designating a much larger portion of their cities and towns as wooi. And I know there are, you know, lots of ramifications in terms of cost, you know, it concerns me to increase the stringency of the fire code windows, sprinklers, which increase costs when we're looking to put in affordable housing. But I think that that's been brought up by several members of the community at fire board meetings. So looking at how we look at our wooi designation as a town. You mentioned in here, looking at stricter policies prohibiting pyrophytic plants, or San Rafael, who has prohibited bamboo and juniper. I think we could flesh out policy around how we look at landscaping, and whether we want, you know, looking at it policy-wise, so that we have consistent, not just sort of spot check, design review on new development. And again, I think there are too many references to this, the pedestrian evacuation trails, I think my colleagues have said it very well. But I do think, you know, I was speaking with Ben, that there are other situations in other disasters where those pedestrian trails might be very effective, and not in a fire. So I don't want to just scratch them out, but looking into that in an earthquake or even a flood, depending on, if you want to go up, you got to go up. I think, I think I've covered all the things that I wanted to, thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to quickly respond, I just didn't want anyone to misconstrue my comments about the pedestrian plans, and I just wanted to encourage my colleagues, as well as EMC and Plan Director Burdo, to look to the way in which Mill Valley emphasizes the utility of the different routes. I think Mill Valley is much further along in terms of emergency preparedness than the town of Fairfax, and we've looked to them for advice on NRGs and the establishment of our own emergency preparedness committee, and they do have a website where they, to Councilmember Goddard's point, identify that fires are not the only emergency we face, and that different routes might be used under different circumstances. and that different routes might be used under different circumstances. Uh, and you know, just one further piece of clarification, like the Town of Mill Valley wasn't uh focusing on that resource. And then they ultimately fate were faced with a citizen lawsuit uh because they weren't focusing on that resource uh as much as they could have been for all the different purposes that it serves. And so um, you know, now there's there's more attention to it, but I definitely think we should be um you know, making sure, just more generally for recreation or any uses, that we we shouldn't be like making that a more obscure resource in town because we don't want people to use it during a wildfire. I think we just need to better communicate the the different utility under different circumstances for that resource. Thanks.
Councilmember Ackerman.
Yeah, one one other comment of just not sure if this is below the level of detail that uh that Richard wants to hear at this point, but I'll just be brief. The uh, the last section is uh, I think is a good one, prepare the community to respond to a regional disruption of services. When we were actually working on the on the original safety, that's the safety element that precedes this, that's being modified now. Uh, I brought up the question uh at that time, and I'll just bring it up again of the risk which we're seeing now of uh disruption of the flow of goods. There there can be all sorts of things, and they don't have to be regional events. They could be a ship that's caught sideways in the Suez Canal that all of a sudden means that we're not getting certain things. And uh and of course, we've also got a pandemic or epidemic that we've been facing, and that's nowhere mentioned in the safety element. But I'm not sure a pandemic is something we, I I just can't think of anything else to say about it that we would locally do other than we're going to be really glad we have a good health department on the county level and we'll pay attention to what they say. But as far as uh disruption on anywhere in the world that causes supply chains or even food to be uh not available, this this section here addresses basically the utilities. The programs talk about making sure that we think about um what we would do if we didn't have electricity, what we would do if we didn't have natural gas or whatever, but it doesn't say anything about um goods or even services that could that would normally come to us, but wouldn't because there's a road out somewhere or whatever. So little vague as to what we might do about that, but that is, I think, a risk that's kind of not not really covered. That's it. Thank you. And good work.
Um, Richard, I how have you gotten the direction you needed? Are there some big nugget items that we haven't addressed? Is he still with us?
That's a good question. Where did he go?
Yeah. I'm here. It's just my voice was gone. I think we haven't really touched too much on how to get people out. You know, when you try to get everybody in the entire town out at one time, or even if you phase them, you know, Paradise had a phased evacuation plan. They put it in place and the fire advanced so quickly that they ended up sending everybody out at once, basically, which resulted in a hu- huge backup. And um, the the researchers who's going to do the specific evacuation um modeling for Fairfax and three other communities, uh, that was their big project initially was look at Paradise after the fact and what happened there. And what can they learn from that? And they're going to use that study to look at Fairfax and a couple other communities and see what they can find out and what they can predict, and if they can come up with any uh uh any pointers on how to deal with it. But and we've thought as staff of things like, can you turn Sir Francis Drake Center into one way out, maybe preserve one lane in for emergency? Um, you know, reverse traffic flow, they do that for hurricanes in the east. Uh, could that work here on a surface street? It's a little trickier, I think, than a freeway. Um, are there dangers along that evacuation route? I mean, certainly there are dangers along your little twisty windy evacuation routes out of the hills. You've got trees overhanging. Um, you know, the shaded fuel break approach, I think, is good there, but we really need to to make sure we can get people out of danger when danger approaches. So if there's any additional feedback on that, that'd be good.
Um, I can provide some feedback. Um, you know, I think, Richard, we would all love that answer, but we don't have the answer. And I would say there's a couple of pieces that I think you should probably just talk about. And I'm not sure what specific section, but number one, we started in 2019, 2020, developing those community friendly evacuation maps that are the fire clear maps. That's the first piece because the whole thing is is we can't depend on police knocking on my door or Renee's door. We need to be able to figure out how to get out ourselves. So there's that. The emergency, the fire folks, if it's a fire, will be dealing with the fire and the police will lead the way to get people out. But obviously, with 7,500 people, it's not going to be easy. The evacuation study that's going on through MWPA and the project you're talking about is the Central Marin Project piece of it is, I think you should just talk about what that plan is because you won't have the answer by the time you need it. And the other piece of it is, um, what else can we add to that? Um, Zone Haven, you touch on. Zone Haven is basically just working through um a way to get people noticing on an app, how to how to help yourself get out. It's it's not the answer. It's just part of the answer. And then I would suggest to you guys that you sit down with police and fire and talk to them about look, before we had all these extra things, we had the mutual threat zones and they were prepared to do what they could to evacuate people. So I think sitting down with them, you can write either it's a whole section on evacuation or a piece of another section. But if you have an expectation that we'll have all the answers by the time the safety element's done, we won't, but I think you can um really just posit how we're going to get to there. And even when we have all those answers, no matter what, it's going to be really hard to get anybody out in some of the areas. So I think you just have to, the reality is what are we doing to try to make it better? And then where we know that there will still be pitfalls. And so if people, and I think the other message that we all hear is when you're told to evacuate, get out. Get out before you're told to evacuate. If it's just a warning, get out because the longer you wait, the harder you're going to be to get out. So I think if you really, I think if you sit down with police and fire and talk to them about that, maybe that's just your a section. You know, doesn't matter. We won't have all the answers, no matter how great we are in two years. Does that help?
Yeah.
Anything else, Richard, that you wanted us to?
Let's see, I think we got direction on additional um the storm detention and how to how to address that. Um, didn't hear anything on the culvert other than the public comment. Any, do they may have thoughts on the storm culvert?
Well, we looked into it. Um, when I was first on the council, myself and another council member, David Weinsdorf, worked with Garrett Toy, our town manager at the time. We thought there was grant money to basically raise town hall. Is that because the town hall is right over the culvert, right?
Mm hmm.
And we found out very quickly that there wasn't money for it. Uh, no grant money. Um, and I think the estimates were about 1.8 million at the time. And it fell by the wayside. It may be that I'm just suggesting that you sort of talk about the issues. And if there are areas where you think that there may be grant funding to assist or ways to potentially do it um or other alternatives. Again, that's, it's a really tough nut, you know, to crack, but we did look at it and it was back, I think, in 2014.
Well, my understanding had been, and this is reflected in the in the draft document, um that the the real bottleneck was on Sherman. And uh, but that an issue, at least at the time that we worked on this general plan, there was a resident that if you if you walk down Sherman to Domingo, right across Domingo, so just right in line with Sherman, there was a resident who had just at that time done a a huge amount of work on their house, and that became, that seemed like it was going to be a big issue with uh opening up the Sherman, the culvert under Sherman. And so that that had been my understanding that uh that that of what the of what the bottleneck was, that raising town hall would help get town hall out of the way of the water, but it wouldn't do anything to prevent flooding downtown. The flooding downtown is caused because it can't get through that bottleneck, and so it pours out right there at that intersection and and runs downtown. So yeah, I think it's proper to to keep the mention of Sherman in the document because I think that is where the issue is. As far as how to fix that issue, I wish I knew.
I see you're taking notes, Richard.
I am taking notes. Lots of notes.
Any other topics you want to feedback on?
I don't think of any others. Do you have some ideas, Ben, on other issues we haven't touched on? We've covered quite a bit of ground.
Yeah, I think plus uh when you add the the written comments we've already received, as you mentioned, we're going to be turning around a revised uh red line and clean copy. I think we'll try to do both um for public comment. And uh, I would say if there's additional i- individual comments, um we can, we can sort that out, but I, we we've got a lot of information already tonight, including a couple of areas that we hadn't really focused on, so that's very helpful.
I'm thinking, Ben, we could do two red lines. One would be original to second draft and one would be first draft to second draft.
Yeah, we we could get into the details later.
Yeah, it's not that hard to make the red lines.
Richard, in the beginning, I understood that um a version will be uploaded to Fairfax Speaks.
Yeah, that's the intention. I don't know the details on that. I just heard it from Andy right before the the meeting started.
Oh.
Ben might know more.
Yeah.
Will the comments be visible to all?
You know, I, w- we're just learning about this program. Um, my understanding is that it would probably be something similar to the comments you see uh on Word documents, and that's my hope, um, is that people could register comments and other people could look at them. Um, the one other thing that I I wanted to jump in uh is on prioritization. Um, I I didn't really hear a lot of comment from your council about this concept that the planning commission uh was interested in, although Mayor Hellman alluded to it uh with in terms of implementation strategies. Uh, we'll feedback from your council on whether we should focus on trying to develop priorities so that we basically end up with something that is an actual work program and we can apply criteria to determine how we're doing.
I mean, is there is there an opportunity to have like? When you mentioned a matrix, Ben, I presumed you're talking about like a s- a spreadsheet or something like the past general plan stuff where it's like the subject, the timeline it's supposed to be finished in and um is that, is that right? You you have to develop that anyway?
Right. So there's there's the general spreadsheet that'll list all those items and, you know, whether they're active or passive, you know, involved in their or or planning specific. Um, but the real, the the real question is, is should we be saying this is what we determine are the highest priorities for the town? That, hey, we want to hold you staff. Boy, I'm getting some interesting feedback. Uh, you staff should be uh focusing on and developing a work program to deliver.
I mean, my take, just really quickly, like, I feel like that's, it almost feels bigger than like what, like direction from a town manager or just from the council. It's almost like, I wonder, um, I don't know if Adam's still on here, but uh, a couple months ago, when Lorena presented, we had talked about doing a community survey about priorities. And I don't know if there's a way to align that kind of thing with this to get insights um or anything like that, but just just a suggestion. Uh, I I just don't foresee it being a really practical thing to try to like work through the priorities of a big matrix at a council meeting. But maybe there's a community workshop. I don't know.
I think one of the pieces of Fairfax Speaks is a poll that gets put up, so we could use something of that sort to poll the public on priorities.
Yeah, I was thinking the same thing. I'm sure there's a feature that offers that. And Ben, were you sug- I I've, I personally like the idea um of prioritizing. Um, Ben, were you suggesting that you come up, that you and EMC uh come up with a proposed prioritization for feedback or?
Yeah, that that's when we come up with our our draft recommendations on the safety element that we look at what we consider the highest priorities. And, you know, frankly, the fire seems to be kind of a dominant safety issue. And it really, and so kind of looking at a variety of of programs associated with uh improving fire safety.
Yeah.
So, yes.
Yeah, asking the public for feedback um on the on the Fairfax Speaks. Um, I did notice, I I really appreciate some of the planning commission's feedback and um around parked cars um interfering with evacuation. We didn't talk about, I didn't see any solution or or the um the item that says the town lacks consistent address numbers. Um, I don't have any data related to that as far as, I don't know if anyone does. Um.
I actually wondered, did you mean consistent meaning they're out of order? Or did you mean that people just
I'll let Ben answer, but my understanding it is is um there are several homes where you can't find the house number. And it's a problem for fire. I I would imagine it's a problem for on a number of fronts.
There are, there are a lot of them. There are also, there are a few places in town where they're out of order. Weirdly, but I, in my experience, a fairly small number. I think the main issue is just that they're not visible or
Yeah.
not there.
Right. It could be, it could be, and it just gets back to the question of various emergency scenarios. Um, and you know, one of the reasons why you like to have experienced uh fire professionals so that they know how to get to, you know, an address, which is, you know, between this block and this block. Uh, but, you know, fire department, every time we do a project that involves, they always say, you know, four inch letters, you know, with a high contrast graphic, et cetera, et cetera. Now, you know, ideally for the, for them, it would be painted on a on a curb, uh, which of course doesn't exist in a lot of town, but it's 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 a emergency concern. Um, you maybe not the highest concern, but in the long run, uh, would make a difference for responders, you know, where every second counts.
You know, a lot of rural areas have a fire department mandated address number.
Yeah.
You go out and it's posted along the road, every single driveway. And it's exactly the same format. It's on a little steel stake or something. Certain color, certain size lettering. They're exactly identical at every single address, which doesn't preclude you from having your own artistic address as well, but you know, there you could implement something of that sort.
Yeah.
Um, I had one other thing that I meant to cover and did not. That is um red flag warning, red flag warning days. A lot of talk in the Cascades um with cons- A lot of talk in the Cascades with concern about cars that are parked and blocking emergency vehicle access. And that places like the Elliott Preserve potentially having some kind of a notification at the base of Cascades that said, no, you know, no parking on Cascade during red flag warning days. I mean, these are all things that need to be explored. But I think there that we could use the red flag warning as a way to really keep the streets clear of people who are parked to go and use our preserves and trailheads. So that's something definitely to explore because there's a lot of work at MWPA. There's a lot of work at Firesafe Marin around red flag warning notifications and things like that. So definitely worth putting in there somewhere.
Yeah, that's a good one, I think.
What about the the concept of chevrons?
I know a weather radio.
Oh, my. Your emergency responders at work. The concept of consideration of chevrons as a way to try to facilitate clear drive lanes. You know, that's that's something that's suggested program. And, you know, relates to this notion, whether it's any number of emergency evacuation scenarios. I know that's it's tricky because you're going to create winners and losers. And there's a lot of informal parking spaces in the town. But we are getting to that point where we're looking at, you know, 20 foot clear pavement and minimum 12 foot drive aisles as being pretty darn important for any number of emergency scenarios.
Yeah, it is. It's definitely just, it just continues to get more and more crowded on the streets. There are spots on on our street that nobody ever used to park in. And now there is always someone parked there. It just keeps moving in that direction and it gets tighter and tighter. Yeah, it's, as my understanding is, Mill Valley just did decide to strike on their side streets to designated parking spaces. And I I do wonder whether at some point we might need to start thinking about that.
Okay, well, I really appreciate all of the input and feedback from the council. I think it was very rich. Do I need to make, do we need to make a motion or do you have what you need?
I think the inputs all been very useful. And again, we'll encourage everyone to submit written detailed comments as well.
Yeah. Okay, it sounds like we do need to make a motion.
Mayor, I think looking at the staff report, it's basically just the presentation. And I think we, we may want to check with the clerk, but I think we're good.
No, I think it's feedback.
Do you concur? Kirk?
I think we need a motion.
You just need feedback. There's no motion.
Yeah. Okay. Well, thank you, Mr. James. Thank you, Ben. Thank you all. Meeting is adjourned.
Mayor?
Yes.
I I I wanted to bring up something really, really briefly that I think is of an emergent nature. I am wondering, after listening to San Anselmo's council meeting last night, they have a COVID testing facility pop up that comes out multiple days a week. I would like to put in a request that we look into having that come with the numbers surging the way they are. Everybody's, the home test kits are just, you know, flying off the shelves. If we could look, since we don't have another meeting for a while, I wanted to put it out there. Is it possible for us to to apply for that kind of a service to be in town?
Madam Mayor, if you don't mind, I'll I'll respond. I'll reach out to the town manager of San Anselmo. My understanding is that they're trying to have regional areas. So as mentioned earlier, kind of looking at the Ross Valley region and San Anselmo kind of playing that central role, looking at other parts. But I'll I'll make the request and see if, in fact, even the mobile unit in our region could move around the regions or move around our local region to see if that would be helpful too. But good point. Thank you for bringing that forward.
Yeah, and that would be great. And if not, we should definitely promote that San Anselmo and the hours of operation. So people from Fairfax know to use that. But thank you. I'm sorry, Mayor, I just.
No, it's important. I will. I will share that Ross Valley School District got funding for to send the kids home with tests before they return from the break. So you have to register for it, but I was really pleased about that. Okay, thank you, Adam, for looking into that for us. Thank you all, wishing you all a safe holiday, and we'll see you next year.
Happy holidays. Happy New Year.
Happy holidays. Bye.